Good morning, everyone. It's 8:58 and we'll begin at nine o'clock. We're still waiting on at least another commissioner for a forum. And I think everyone is planning to be here.
Sheri, can you make me visible? Oh, there he is.
Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome you all to today's Zoom meeting. And we welcome all of our citizens who are tuning in and all of our commissioners who are here and our staff as well. As we begin, if you will please join me in a word of prayer and then afterwards I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Father God, we just thank you again for this day that you have made. And we just want to again appreciate all that you're doing in this day. We also ask, Lord God, that you will continue to forgive us and have mercy on us. And even as we come through COVID-19, we thank you, Father, for health and healing upon our citizens and the prosperity of our citizens and businesses, God. And we just again, thank you again for the wisdom that you will give us as we conduct the business for today. And we just ask this in all in Jesus' name and all that agree, please say amen. I ask that you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for joining in in prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. We will now hereby call the meeting to order for today, which is Tuesday, May 5th. And we thank you all for again practicing social distancing as we come through COVID-19. So at this time, are there any changes or revisions to the agenda? I see our county manager, we will ask that you be recognized.
Yes, good morning, Chair Wood and Board of Commissioners. I would ask that the board amend the agenda to add a resolution amending the hero pay that was approved by the board. If you all will recall, we initially provided hero pay up until April 21st. And we did not have a board meeting on the 21st. And so we do need to extend it to Sunday, May 3rd, which would have been this past Sunday. So I would ask that the board amend the agenda to just reflect a resolution amending the previous hero pay ordinance that was approved by the board.
Okay, we've got a request to amend the agenda for resolution to extend the hero pay to May 3rd. Now open the floor for a motion to accept. I see Commissioner Farm accepting the motion.
Who to approve?
And Commissioner Clemens for second. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all are in favor, please signal by raising your hand.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you. That was a unanimous decision. We will move that right under the county manager's comment as a 7A item. Are there any other changes or revisions to the agenda?
No ma'am, not for me.
Okay, any from any of the commissioners? Okay, seeing none. We now accept a motion to accept the agenda with the addition that was just made. Okay, I see a motion from Commissioner Barnes.
A second.
Okay, second from Commissioner Clemens. Any further discussions regarding the acceptance of the agenda? If not, all that agree, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, again, that was a unanimous decision on accepting the agenda. We will now move into the next agenda item, which is a proclamation for the Building Safety Month. And I'll turn it over to our county clerk, Miss Stephanie Braun. Miss Braun. Okay, is she there? Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, Sheri.
Okay, we can hear you now. So you may proceed.
This is a proclamation and recognition of Building Safety Month. Whereas Henry County is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster. And whereas the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, and other construction industry who work year round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. Whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to America's prosperity. Whereas safer buildings, safer communities, safer world is a theme for Building Safety Month 2020 and encourages all Americans to raise awareness about the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2020 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure the safety of our built environment and recognizes that the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies has saved lives and protected homes and businesses. Whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that May 2020 shall be known as Building Safety Month in Henry County and encourages citizens to participate in Building Safety Month activities. Signed by June Wood, Henry County Board of Commissioners Chair.
All right, thank you, Ms. Braun, and we appreciate that. As we continue to focus on good quality, safe buildings and structures here in Henry County, and we will continue to honor Building Safety Month. So thank you for reading that proclamation. So at this time now, we're moving to our next agenda, which is the recognition of some of our Henry County employee retirements. And we'll welcome up Mr. Brad Johnson for that.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and happy Tuesday to you guys. This morning, it's always my pleasure to recognize our members that are retiring, going to their next chapter in their life and turning the page after Henry County. And this morning, we have three. We have Terry Taylor, which is a Deputy Clerk IV with 25 years of service to Henry County in Superior Court. We have Lena Rebecca Bell, a Deputy Clerk III with 15 years of service with the probate court. We also have Sergeant Charles Kenneth Wesley, 11 years of service with Henry County Sheriff's Department. We truly appreciate these employees that make Henry County so great. And we definitely, these years of service would truly be missed with this institutional knowledge we're losing with them. However, we do have people on the bench ready to move up and take their spots as they move on to the next journey. And we're happy for them. Sad that they cannot be here in person. We have to do a virtual meeting. But we congratulate them on their next step, the next chapter of life. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you, Mr. Johnson. And we do congratulate Ms. Taylor, Mr. Wesley, and also Ms. Bell, wishing them the very best. And again, hopefully after we get through our social distancing and opening up, they are welcome to come back so that we can recognize them in person if they choose to return. But we do wish them the very best in their next stage of life. So thank you again for those, and we do welcome them and congratulate them. So thank you again. Okay, well, we'll now then move to our county manager comments. And then afterwards, we'll ask our county manager to present the resolution again regarding our heroes pay after her comments. So you may proceed, Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, Chair Wood, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This morning, I do have a couple of updates that I want to provide to the board specifically regarding our COVID-19. And then I wanted to make the board aware of some departmental funding resources that have been made available as a result of COVID-19. I know a number of the commissioners have reached out wanting to make sure that we are at the table for funding. And so I wanted you all to be aware of some funding opportunities that have been afforded to Henry County as a result of COVID-19. I will provide a clear spreadsheet to you all immediately following the meeting. But wanted you all to be aware of just some departments that have already been notified of allocated funding. Our Henry County Airport will be receiving funding from the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of approximately $69,000. Our staff is working diligently to get the application completed for that, and it should be submitted this week. As I've mentioned to you all before, our Community Development Department also received some additional supplemental funding for, through our HUD program, in the amount of about $704,000. We also had our courts under the district attorney to receive some additional funding through the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for emergency victim assistance. Our Elections Department is going to be receiving money, funds from the Georgia Secretary of State. This is a reimbursement, and it is at 90% up to $3,000 for PPE and 75% up to $3,000 for drop offs. So there were two separate grants that the Elections Department actually was going to be applying for for that funding. Our library system also will be receiving funding from the Georgia Public Library Service. That again is a reimbursement only grant in the amount of $4,047. Our E911 Department will be receiving funding or applying for funding or reimbursement through FEMA and/or GEMA. It's probably about $2.6 billion, $2.6 million, I'm sorry. Also, we have our Police Department will be looking at funding through the Bureau of Justice Assistance and the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, one in the amount of $98,000, another to be determined. And then we have our Senior Services Department that will be looking at funding through the Community Foundation for the reimbursement of meals that we've been providing. We also have our Transit Department that has been awarded funding in the amount of $2.7 million. Again, this is through the CARES Act, and so they will be pursuing that funding. At this time, that is all the funding that we've been made aware of. But we are making sure that we are participating in all webinars, conference calls, and any other calls that are happening in terms of making sure that we are seeking those funds that could possibly be returned to the county. So I want you all to be aware of that. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ash to give a quick update on COVID-19 in terms of where we stand as a county and some of the efforts that Mr. Ash and the EMA team have conducted as a result of it.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Just want to give you some updates. As it stands today, May 5th, throughout the state of Georgia, we have confirmed cases of COVID-19 at 29,423. Total deaths are 12,46. For Henry County, our numbers are 520 cases with 13 fatalities. By way of testing, confirmed testings in the state of Georgia are 198,206. And as we relate that to our population in Henry County, you can estimate 216.79 cases per population of 100,000. One of the primary areas we've been focusing on lately is our long-term care facility. We're very excited and we're very supportive that Westbury and McDonough doesn't have any confirmed cases. We're also reassured that one of our centers that were affected, Mount Carmel Personal Care, all our patients are stable at this time, and they feel that they've reached that curve. The National Guard will be out at a center tomorrow testing a long-term care facility in the Eagles Landing area, testing the residents as well as the staff for that facility. We continue to work on supplying our PPE needs for our public safety, our government workforces, which includes our municipal cities as well, and our court services. So we're also working on a long-range plane that will carry us into the fall because we are continually working through this COVID-19 situation. In Henry County currently, we do have one testing site at the Heritage Senior Center located at Florence McGarrett Boulevard, and it's operated by Public Health. And citizens are encouraged to use the number. They are required to go through their system. And the number for that would be 1-800-847-4262 to get certification to go through that testing center. And we continue to work with our municipal partners, our court services. And I'm glad to tell you this morning, we have no unmet needs for any of our partners. Thank you, and I'll take any questions you have for me.
Hey, good evening. Okay, I see Commissioner Holmes with his hands raised, and then we'll come to Commissioner Thomas. Okay, Commissioner Holmes.
Don, Sheri, given the fact that so many people are asymptomatic and we are now returning to work, do we have plans on mandating a test for employees that will be at the administration building?
So Commissioner Holmes, we actually, I put a request in through our deputy county manager to coordinate with the Department of Public Health to see if we can get some testing done for specifically not only our public safety, but for some of the employees that are returning because that has been a request. You're absolutely correct. We did start returning employees to work on yesterday. And one of the things that we're doing right now is for every employee that's coming in, we are requiring them to have a mask. We are asking three specific questions in terms of have they been out of the county? Have they had any type of symptoms? Have they felt any kind of way? And then we are taking those employees' temperatures. But we will again request through the Department of Public Health to see if we are able to get some testing completed for staff.
Now, there are a number of testing sites now open where people can go. And they don't have, they don't need a, need to be sick or need a doctor's prescription where they can go to get tested. Do you think it's a good idea that we make our employees get tested before entering?
So I will, if you don't mind, Commissioner Holmes, I'm going to defer to Mr. Joxstetter just from a legal standpoint to see if we can make it mandatory for those employees to be tested. I do know that the Department of Public Health had a call on Monday with all of the Department of Public Health board members. And one of the things that they talked about was setting up a mobile testing site. And I think they were starting in La Grange this week, and it would be mobile in terms of moving throughout the district. I do believe that that site or that type of mobile testing site would allow individuals to go up and be tested without having to have that patient under investigation or PUI number. But Mr. Joxstetter, can you speak to whether we can make it mandatory for those employees to be tested?
I mean, I can't give you an affirmative answer whether we can or can't. You know, the courts haven't really weighed in on much of, if anything, related to this entire event. But I will say that I was on a call yesterday with the court personnel, the court systems, and the doctor from Public Health, Dr. O. And the message I took away from that conference, that phone conference, was that right now testing is less important than the protective measures, probably the protective measures Sheri you've put into place. Now, I can't speak to whether that's accurate or not, but that was the message that he was giving. I mean, I think the key question about whether we could have testing for all the employees is whether it's practical to do so. If it's practical, if that is an achievable thing, if we can in fact test all the employees, then I think we can dig into whether it's, that's a reasonably appropriate step to take at this point. But I couldn't tell you as a matter of law, one way or the other, right now. We just haven't received that type of guidance from courts.
I think, I think we're just talking about testing the employees who are going to be showing up at county facilities, not all employees that have the ability to work from home. And also, you know, if, you know, the Health Department is talking about putting sites in place, they should look at sites in the more populated areas. I'm pretty sure La Grange doesn't have the population that Henry County has. So why hasn't more testing been moved, you know, towards our direction?
And Commissioner Holmes, you are being absolutely correct. And that's one of the things that we have really been stressing to the Department of Public Health, that Henry County numbers are much larger in terms of the number of confirmed cases. And why are we not getting the, and I hate to say the resources, but the ability to have testing sites? We did push for a number of weeks to get a testing site, and most recently, we were able to get the site at Heritage. But it's my understanding that they are looking to actually scale down. Right now, they're going to go seven days a week, but I have heard that they're looking to go back to a five-day-a-week plan. And so I think what Patrick is saying is that the Department of Public Health is definitely not pushing the testing. They're pushing more the protective gear. But we have tried and tried and tried to make them aware of opportunities. I know Mr. Ash has even provided a couple of facilities that we've received information from commissioners, specifically in the Eagles Landing family practice. And then we did get a request for the NIDAS development up in Fairview. We have continuously sent that to the Department of Health, making them aware that these providers want to help provide testing. That the response that we're getting is either no response or it has to meet a certain criteria. We will continue to push it. If nothing else, we will formalize it and put an email out to Dr. O. And see if there's a possibility of adding some additional testing sites. But you are correct in that Henry County has the largest number of confirmed cases within district four. And so that is definitely, that's definitely been a concern for us at the staff level. I know Chair Wood has been on a call. Mayor Ford is the chair or the board chair for the Department of Public Health, and he has expressed some concerns. So I think, again, hearing it from you, Commissioner, and hearing it from the other commissioners, we will reiterate the importance of getting some additional testing sites here at the county.
And I would like to add as well, Commissioner Holmes, I've already pre-drafted a note about some testing sites. And I tell you, we may need to put it in a form of a resolution from the Board of Commissioners. And I think that would carry a whole lot more weight. So, but that has been the primary focus that I know Mayor Ford and I have been addressing with the Department of Health. I've drafted a letter to Mayor Ford because he's the chair of the Board of Health. And again, I just think it'd take a lot more weight if we formalize it from the Board of Commissioners. So I would be very open to getting all of our commissioners on board with that as we formulate that. The other thing is that mobile testing site that Ms. Matthews spoke about, that the van was actually donated by Wellstar over in that county. And plus, that county is experiencing a lot more deaths, fatalities in that county. So again, we hear the Department of Health Director hearing us, but again, trying to spread these resources across 12 counties. And we will continue to focus for Henry County. So thank you for those comments.
Thank you, Chair. Now, Kaiser, I know we've worked closely with Kaiser over the past few years, and I know they have a mobile unit. Is there a possibility that Kaiser can do testing in Henry County with their mobile unit? I know, I know our insurance folk are on the call, so maybe Mike can address that. My guess is, thought I saw his name. Well, Sheri, can you?
Yes, let me unmute him, Commissioner. I've unmeeted him. He's got to click his link. And if I can't get him, okay, very good. Thank you.
Chris is on the call.
Yes, Chris Clark. I can unmute him as well.
Okay, the part about Kaiser providing a mobile unit to test, and we can take that to them today, as far.
Chris, I've unmeeted you. I don't know if there's anything additionally that you'd like to add.
I'd really just agree with Mike that we'll take it to them immediately following the meeting and have a conversation and report back to, to who, I guess Sheri, to you and to HR about what they're willing to do. You may recall though, that they did kind of retrench a little bit when this all started and kind of they closed some of their external offices to concentrate their resources in certain areas for both safety and efficiency. So whether or not that affected the availability of their mobile unit or not, I'm not sure, but we'll certainly check on it.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've got to go to Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Clemens. Okay, Commissioner Thomas.
And thank you. This is in reference to COVID-19 as well. I wanted to ask if the staff has taken the precaution to put up Plexiglas in all of our areas in the administrative building that's receiving the public, especially down in planning and zoning and permits and areas where they have to receive the public? Have we gone to the extra extent to put up the Plexiglas to protect our employees?
Commissioner Thomas, I am pleased to report that we are definitely COVID-ready here in not only the administration building, but within all of our facilities that have received a high volume of traffic.
Okay, we're having a lot of feedback. I think if everyone would mute your phones if you're not speaking, and I will do the same.
And so Commissioner Thomas, just to reiterate, yes, we are already COVID-19 ready. The administration building, as you've known it, does not look the same any longer. We have actually implemented not only Plexiglas within our respective departments, but we also have service windows where when the public enters the administration building specifically, they're going to be stopped at the front door where they will be served by an individual area for them to meet with a staff member protected by Plexiglas. We've also instituted at the lower level in the tag office, the same thing. We've installed Plexiglas not only in the tag office, but in the building department, planning and zoning, and throughout a number of our court systems. And we've already taken the steps to do that. Our Facility Maintenance Director actually started working four weeks ago on what needed to happen when we were ready to pull the trigger on bringing the public back. As a reminder to the board, right now, our buildings are still closed to the public. We are only open for the employees, and we are working on a cohort schedule, meaning that we only have half of our staff here on an even number day and half on an odd number day. And so we're definitely ready to bring the public back at the time that we determine that it's most feasible to return the public to the building. But we are definitely COVID-19 ready, and we have definitely taken some necessary steps that we feel will remain in place for some time, not only to protect our employees, but to protect the citizens who are going to be frequenting the building as well. The only provision, and I do want to, just for clarification, our Department of Transportation does not have any Plexiglas or anything, because most of those workers are out in the field. But they are working. We have them back out. We have our grass being cut. And what we're doing is we're requiring our staff to have masks on. If they are outside of their office, they are required to have a mask on and to continue to practice social distancing. So we definitely have taken the necessary steps to adhere to the guidelines that have been set forth by CDC and the Department of Public Health. Hold on one second, Commissioner Thomas. Let me unmute you.
In addition to that, do you have a schedule of decontamination that's going to be ongoing for the administrative building? And second of all, are we providing for the staff the PPEs that are required for them to be on-site working for us?
So Commissioner Thomas, the staff members that do not have masks, we are providing them with the PPE, the masks, for them to be in the building. Mr. Hutch Purvis and Holly LeFontaine, who's our risk director, has been working with vendors on decomposing, not decomposing, I'm sorry, on cleaning out the buildings. Jump into the corner real quick. I do apologize. But they are definitely working with vendors on securing who can come in and clean our buildings, deconning our buildings, I'm sorry. And so that is definitely something that we are already working on. We do still have in the administration building our cleaning services. And so the individual who normally does the cleaning in our facility has continued to do that throughout the facility being shut down. We are also asking staff members to just be a little more cognizant and in making sure that when they're in specific areas, that they are wiping down and taking some ownership of their workspace as well. But we are definitely looking to work with vendors on who we can get into the facility to make sure that the buildings are not only being sanitized, but being cleaned to protect our employees and those that may frequent the building once we reopen.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to ask also Mr. Ash, if he's still on the line, what other things are in place to assist with the jails in the county in the same line of questions of decontamination and keeping them clean and up to par? And I know he mentioned the personal care homes. But what about assisted living? But what about assisted living? How, what are we doing to help with the assisted living? I know we have the care homes and the nursing homes, but assisted living is another area that we need to be concerned about. How are we reaching out to them?
Sure, um, yeah. Sure. Um, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Let me address those questions. So when I talk about long care, all our long care facilities, which would include assisted living, they have the ability to go through state resources. And the National Guard is heading the decon team. So they reach out to us and we've been in contact with a lot of these facilities to assist them with gathering PPE equipment. Um, we can also reach out to them and support them if their facility need to be deconed through the National Guard team that goes through the State Operations Center, the GMA. Um, for the jail facility, likewise, um, we're in constant contact with our jail, um, command staff. If they have the ability, they need that resource. We're able to tap into the state resources to bring those decontamination teams in and treat the facilities. Um, I think that jail is currently operating on a segregation plan to keep parts of their area, if they have to remove the inmates to a different area, so they can come in and decon those. So we are working with all those teams as a part of our logistical support for EMA. She's muted.
The spread of COVID in Henry County. Is there a particular area, geographic area that you all are working with? Mr. Ash, I can't hear.
Your question.
Commissioner, Commissioner Thomas, could you repeat your question?
Sure. My question is to Mr. Ash, and my question is, is there a geographical area in Henry County that they are targeting or most concerned about to make sure we stop the spread of COVID-19 in Henry County?
Sure. In, in our conversations with Dr. Owen, District Four Public Health, by far the city of McDonough has the most cases of COVID-19. So that's possible, that's part of the reason why we have a testing center located in McDonough to address that need. They are bringing resources to support that as well. Again, I'll tell you that we're most fortunate that our biggest long-term care facility, nursing home in Henry County, being Westbury, has no cases. So they are pushing that information to us as well as part of our communication with the Department of Public Health.
Of McDonough and the fact that we need to work with them. How are we communicating to the public about the city of McDonough and the fact that we need to concentrate and work with them? And I apologize you guys, since we don't have work sessions, we end up using our meetings as work sessions and meetings, but these are things that we need to know.
So Commissioner Thomas, one of the things that we've tried to make sure that we're sharing with the board are all of the updates that are coming from the Department of Public Health. And about two or three weeks ago, we actually had a meeting, um, it was specifically for Henry County with the Department of Public Health. And they talked a lot about those hotspots. One of the things that was loud and clear from the Department of Public Health is that Henry County residents are spending way too much time at the grocery store. Um, based on the information that they provided, most of the cases or confirmed cases were within a small radius of our major grocery store chains, um, here in Henry County. I want to just make one clarification. When we talk about McDonough, it's not just the city of McDonough. Confirmed cases are based on the, um, zip code for the resident in which they reside. So you may have an individual that may have a 30253 zip code that has a confirmed case, but they may be within the unincorporated areas of Henry County and not within the municipal boundaries. One of the other things that Mr. Ash and, um, Mr. Johnson has done, where we were immediately made aware of the concerns by the Department of Public Health, is that we created a public safety task force. And the task force took about a day and a half visiting with every grocery store, every dollar store, every retail store here in Henry County, making them aware of the CDC guidelines, what their employees needed to be doing, and what they needed to do to make their businesses more social distancing and COVID-19 ready. And so we've taken every measure that, that's been afforded to us through the Department of Public Health to make individuals aware of what needs to happen. Um, if you've noticed, if you've been in a grocery store recently, you should see that there are now tape, um, tape on the floor where we're outlining where individuals need to stand. Um, we're now pushing the grocery store chains to make sure that their employees not only have gloves on, but they have masks on as well. You'll notice that a lot of the grocery stores now have a one-way down aisle versus everybody walking in the same direction. But a lot of it, Commissioner Thomas, is just if individuals have got to follow the rules. And I think that's what we've spent a lot of time on, trying to educate individuals. Um, I remember being in Publix and they had a one-way down and the individual that was putting out the groceries was coming the other way. And so I immediately said, hey, you've gotta follow your own rules. And if you're gonna enforce it, you've gotta start with the, at the top and enforcing that. Um, we do continue to try to share with the municipalities, and I think we've done a great job trying to work with them specifically on this public safety task force. Um, but you're, you're right. I think a lot of it is gonna be us as individuals taking ownership of making sure that we're doing the right thing. Um, one of the things I, I give the board kudos for, and I know it's, it's definitely painful to have to do the Zoom meetings, but you all have been huge supporters of, let's make sure that we're not coming together and, and we're, we're practicing that social distancing. And so I think you all are the, the preachers of making sure that people do it the right way. Commissioner Thomas, did that answer your question or did it lead to another question?
It answers my question. And believe me, I am reading your situation reports. And one of the things that I am trying to do for people who are watching and listening, to make sure they understand that we are making these different positive moves to keep the spread of COVID-19 down in Henry County. And that's one of the reasons for the questioning and being so specific as we are. Um, and I, this may have to be a question to Patrick at this point in time. And thank you for saying that our building is COVID. I mean, because there are cashier stations that do not have the Plexiglas up. That means if you are a restaurant, if you're a dollar store.
Okay, um, we're, Commissioner Thomas's, um, is frozen at this point.
Mask and glove protections for their employees. Because some of them don't have them and they cannot get them, don't know how to secure them. Those are the types of things that I'm looking for. If we're going to reopen Henry County, which the governor has reopened the state basically, what can we do to try to help stop the spread? And that's my line of questioning to you. Um, not to say that you guys have not given us a situation report, not to say you're not doing anything, but to help communicate this information to the people that are watching us and listening to us, okay? So can we make those types of requirements, Patrick? I, I don't know, but could you help me with that?
A- as it stands at this moment, no, we can't. The governor's order essentially prohibits us from taking any action not specifically authorized by the governor during, during the, uh, during the public health crisis. So if, if a measure is not mandated in the governor's orders, then we have no authority to mandate it ourselves.
Well, that's concerning and, and to me greatly that we have some providers who are out there doing some things that are great to protect the public. And we have some who are cutting corners who really need to do more to protect the public while they're open. And that was my reason for that question as well. Uh, thank you so many because right now we have so many people who really want to work and are doing a great job, but they're not being protected as well as they could be in the workplace. So thank you.
Okay, anything else Commissioner Thomas?
I know I have a question that was proposed to me, and I'm not sure, Patrick, again. Is there any way to, um, and I'm asking this question on behalf of a constituent, to mandate if you have no mask, um, no covering, that you're not allowed to shop in certain stores? Can we put in a type of, anything like that? No mask, no entry to help the public? Is that allowed at all?
Well, again, the county has no authority to do that. We, we can, we can do nothing that the governor hasn't ordered. However, a private, a private business owner, a private property owner, a, a private store owner could certainly enforce his or her own rules regarding admission into their premises.
Okay, well, that's good to know. So what we have to do, I don't mean us as a county. Even citizens would have to do is make a request to the store owners to make some of these provisions posted to say, no mask, no entry, just like we do other things about shopping in a particular area, shoes and shirts required and all that type of stuff. Okay, thank you very much, Patrick.
Okay, um, also we'll now move to Commissioner Clemens. Thank you, Commissioner Clemens. Oh, you may proceed now.
Give me one second to unmute. Oh, she's unmuted.
Good morning. Um, Patrick may be better able to answer this question, but I'm just concerned about our courts getting ready to open. I know that there was something that came down from the Supreme Court that they are allowed to go back. But although we're taking care of our staff within our, um, administrative buildings, I want to make sure that we have had conversations with our courts, that, uh, those who work in our courts have, uh, specific criterias, guidelines and equipment that they need as well. But also I want you to go a little further and make sure that if they're calling in jurors, that we have enough equipment, masks to provide to our jurors. Because although we don't count them on a daily basis, they do become, um, semi-employees since we pay them when they come to court. So if you guys can talk a little bit about where we are with the court systems and how we're preparing, um, safety measures for courts back in sessions. Also, um, if we don't have something in place, um, just like, um, you know, Commissioner Thomas just mentioned about going into the stores, we should require, now what we can do is we can require that if you come into our county buildings, you wear a mask. We can require that if you come into our court systems, you wear a mask. So even though we can't do it from a private sector, um, level, I think that we should consider that. Maybe we have to do a resolution and vote for that. But we should consider that from a county perspective. And I'm proposing that we add that, um, to our agenda the day that we start opening. And maybe we need to do that today since the courts will open before we convene again. And if the court is gonna open before we convene, I would ask that we add that Chair Wood to make sure that if they're entering any county buildings, that they must wear a mask. So that's a couple of things I know I, I talked about, but I'll just wait on you guys. And we don't have, I don't want to have to waste time, um, on the Zoom to answer these if you think that you can just send me that information, but I just want to make sure that we're on top of that.
And I'll, Commissioner, I will certainly send you some additional information. But, but I think it's good for the public to know right now that the Georgia Supreme Court has announced that they will be issuing another order on the judicial emergency that will likewise keep the court system, I don't want to say closed, but keep the court system at, at a lower functioning level through the middle of June. So I don't think we're looking at an immediate opening of the court system. We, I spent the better part of an hour and a half yesterday on a call between, um, again, between Dr. O from the Department of Health and a number of court officials where they were, um, grappling with what measures to put into place. There are going to be some concerns about court functions and masks and testing as people enter the courtroom. Because you know, in, entering, very few people go into courtrooms voluntarily. So there, there's going to be some different, more complex issues related to courts. And we'll, we'll be working through those and we'll keep, we'll keep everybody informed on the status.
We may, um, Sherry, have to, um, look into investing into thermometers and having someone at the doors of our buildings to make sure that people that enter the building are not entering with fever. Um, and that, you know, they're not entering sick. So we just need to also think about, once we open back up to the public, there's gonna be a second phase that we need to address. I know we're at phase one where we're staggering employees, but phase two comes about when, um, the public is allowed into our facilities. And so I want to see you guys do an extensive, um, you know, call messaging meetings about how do we allow the public back into the facilities.
Absolutely. We will have a full communications plan on how that will occur. Um, I would envision that it's gonna be similar to what we're already doing with the employees by doing the thermometer check, making sure that, um, anyone that's entering the building has a mask on. That was one thing I wanted to get clarification from our county attorney, and he's already confirmed that for me. Um, but we definitely want the public to understand what the new norm will be, and we'll definitely get that information out, Commissioner.
Okay. Okay, any, any other questions or comments? Because I do want to request an amendment to the agenda so that we can vote on a resolution, one, to send a, a joint message to the Department of Health, um, regarding testing, requiring more testing or requesting more testing here in Henry County. And also that part of that resolution should state, um, that we will, um, uh, work with the county manager and the county attorney to develop some specific, um, COVID-19 prevention measures for when the public is, um, entering back into our buildings. So, um, those are some, what I've heard. So, um, is there a, uh, motion to, um, amend the agenda unless there is something else that we need to discuss? Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Uh, he's made the motion.
Oh, okay. Okay, so Commissioner Holmes made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any further discussions? Okay, all in favor to amend the agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Okay. So at this time now, we will vote for a resolution, um, that will have two parts. One, um, will, um, allow me to issue a letter on behalf of the Board of Commissioners to the Department of Health for, um, the request for more testing sites here in Henry County. And then the second part of that resolution will be to empower the county manager and county attorney to actually develop some, um, COVID-19 prevention measures, social distancing, masks, whatever it is, um, that, um, will, um, be issued regarding to the public when the, uh, buildings are open, the county buildings are open to the public. So the floor is now open for a motion unless there is something else we need to include in.
I, I have a discussion on that. Aren't our county parks open now, Sherry?
So the walking trails and walking paths only are open, but all of the parks have remained closed. Um, in terms of the playground equipment, that still was closed off to the public.
Okay, so are we requiring that people wear masks on the county properties that are open?
We have not, Commissioner. And if that's something that the board wants us to do, we can certainly, um, get that rectified. We can definitely require that if you're going to be out walking, um, then you will be required to wear a mask. Unless, and I can't see the county attorney, unless he's telling me otherwise that we cannot do that.
Okay, that's why, again, I was suggesting that you all get together to help us develop something that would be.
If you want to come back and, and add, we can come back Chair Wood, if you want to come back and add that. But the main thing is that I wanted to make sure that we take all measures to make sure that if people are out in public, you know, and it's from, you know, Commissioner, um, we had a constituent to ask about the private facilities. Maybe we can't mandate privates, but we can definitely mandate our public facilities. And so I just want to make sure that people are gathering. It's getting warmer. They're going to gather. They're going to get, gather in our parks. At least we can make sure that they're safe when they come to our parks by requiring that they wear masks. We can come back and take it off later if things get better. But I think that if they're in the public parks, that we should require. And they may not do it, and I know we can't enforce it, but we can recommend it. So we could put in that it is recommended that they wear masks in the public parks. I would like to add that if the other commissioners don't have an issue with it.
Okay, we're gonna open it up. Okay, I see Commissioner Thomas, you had a comment before we get to the motion. You're muted, so someone can unmute. Okay, Commissioner Thomas.
I definitely support the statements that are made by Commissioner Clemens because I am very, very concerned about the public. And what we need to do is set in an example for their safety. Uh, one of the things I have mentioned before, we do need to have a reopening plan. And we are basically talking about that here in parks without having a full plan. We have our recreation departments. We need a plan. How will we receive people inside in our gym area and exercise area? Uh, the administrative building may be COVID-ready, but do we have equipment spaced properly? How are we going to de-contaminate areas that people are in? We need a plan. And we probably cannot do that here on this particular call. But as I stated before, we've got to have a complete plan of how we want to see Henry County reopen. And we need to be an example of that plan. Uh, that will go back to posting and signing that I requested before to, to let the public know that COVID-19 is still killing and it is still spreading. And we need to be proactive in how we, as a county, uh, receive the public and how we, as a county, are putting in place protective measures. Um, uh, Ms. Matthews, I certainly hope you have a conversation with your other counterparts, the, the, uh, county, the city managers, and talk about what they're doing for their facilities. So we'll look very similar. So if I have to go to Stock Ridge and pay my water bill, just for an example, I can expect the same thing there when I enter into their facility. It would be great if you could have that conversation. It would be great if you could have that conversation as well to see if we can start looking at how we can look holistic in the county and reopening the county. And then I think some of our businesses will start saying, we've got to do this too, because if they're doing, they're going to require us one day somehow to get it done. So that would be great. This is information I want to share.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Are there any other thoughts from other commissioners? Okay, well, the floor is now open for a motion regarding the resolution. And again, I'll just restate it and I'll make it. The motion on the table is, one, to give me the authorization to issue a letter to the Department of Health for an additional testing site here in Henry County. Then the second part of it is to, again, empower the county manager and the county attorney to develop some preventative COVID-19 measures that would be issued based when we open up the facilities to the public. So that's the motion on the table. Is there, okay, Commissioner Holmes?
No, second.
Okay, I think, okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Chair, can you not limit it to one additional site, just in case there is the possibility that we can get multiple?
Yes, I would say additional, so it wasn't necessarily for one, so, okay. So we had a motion and a second, and again, just to clarify that the additional testing sites would not just be limited to one, but as many as we can get. So I got that, and thank you for that clarification. So we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hands by signaling. Okay, that looks unanimous, okay. Any opposed? Okay, didn't see any. I think it was unanimous, so, so very good. So thank you, that has moved, and we'll look forward to it. And Commissioner Thomas, what we probably would want to do, and we'll ask the county manager, she will at least plan some level of a workshop meeting in the future just to talk about that and see those who count to ten can, if necessary. So that way, we've got a pretty thorough communications plan on that. So we'll request our county manager to schedule a workshop for that. Okay, all right, anything else regarding Mr. Ash? And I appreciate all of the time and energy and thoughts that have come from our board regarding COVID-19, because this is a very serious matter, and we just appreciate the investment of time and thought that you all put into it today. So Ms. Matthews, anything else that you would like to add? I do know we've got to get to the resolution on the hazard pay, or the hero's pay is what we're calling it. So is there anything else before you move into that?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Okay, so you now may proceed to discuss the resolution for the hero's pay that was amended at the beginning of the meeting.
Absolutely, and again, thank you, chair and board members. I do have a resolution authorizing an extension to the Resolution Number 20-53, which created the hazard pay for certain county employees during the COVID-19 state of emergency. As you all will recall, the resolution actually authorized the hazard pay to begin on March 17th and to terminate on April 21st, which would have been a previous, which would have been a Board of Commissioners meeting. But because we had no agenda items, we did cancel that board meeting. And I in it burnedly did not remember that the actual resolution expired on the 21st. We have returned employees to work. They started on yesterday. And so I am recommending that we do extend the hazard pay resolution that was previously approved to the board beyond April 21st to Sunday, May 3rd. And so that would be in line with those employees that worked up until that date. But again, we have returned employees on a cohort schedule. They started on Monday of this week, which was yesterday, working their full eight hours. But again, working on a stagnant schedule and adhering to all of the social distancing requirements that have been set forth by the CDC. So at this time, Chair Wood, I would just ask that the resolution that was previously approved be amended to just reflect that the termination is now Sunday, May 3rd. All other provisions outlined in the resolution will remain in place.
Okay, well, thank you, and we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments before we open up for a motion? Okay, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, and then I think I saw Commissioner Barm raise his hand second. So we got Commissioner Barm as the second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that is, Commissioner Holmes, I didn't see your hand. Okay, all right, okay. So that was a unanimous approval to extend it, the hero's page and May the 3rd and everything else remaining the same.
Thank you, board.
Okay, so if there's anything else, we'll move to our next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. Anything else, Ms. Matthews?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Okay, we'll now move into item eight, which is our consent agenda. And we have at least four resolutions. The first one is from Animal Control, which is a resolution to accept a donation for the Henry County Animal Control Department from Brig Nori, in the amount of $1,000. The second consent agenda item is a Henry County Police Department Resolution Accepting Equipment Award valued at $10,969.75, which is a grant award from the Georgia Traffic Incident Management Enhancement Task Force to provide 75 traffic cones, 25 rope flare kits, and 26 barricades. The next resolution is EMA, an emergency management resolution approving the Emergency Management Communications Lease Agreement for Tower Space located at 2233 Richard Petty Boulevard on the property owned by the City of Hampton for Public Safety Emergency Communication System. And then the last consent agenda item is a SPOS resolution approving the purchase of wetland and string bank credits for the McDonough Parkway Extension and SPOS 4 Major Road Improvement Project. So are there any of these items that the board wishes to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda. I see Commissioner Wilson, then Commissioner Holmes as a second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that is a unanimous approval of the consent agenda. We're now moving to our planning and zoning here, and this is the first time that we will do this via Zoom. But this is regarding the public hearing ULDC AM 20-01, and it's an ordinance to amend multiple sections of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code regarding regulating small box discount stores, vape stores, and certain personal service establishments for other purposes. And again, this is a county-wide. We did, again, notify those who wish to speak during the public hearing to at least submit their interest no later than 8:45 a.m. this morning. And after the presentation from Mr. Stacy Jordan Rudisell, we'll open it up for the public hearing aspect where those who wish to speak in favor, we have a time of 10 minutes, and those who wish to speak in opposition. And at that time, I'll turn it over to our county clerk to acknowledge those who may have signed in prior to 8:45 a.m. this morning. So at this time, I will welcome Mr. Stacy Jordan Rudisell to make that presentation.
Thank you, Chair Wood, commissioners. This item, before you came in February originally, and the board indicated that they wished for planning and zoning to draft an ordinance regarding the distance requirements between dollar stores and between certain retail and public service establishments. And we did that, and we brought that first draft back to the BOC in April for comments. And we did receive comments from the BOC specifically that the distance that would be required should be increased. And so we're bringing it back before you today. We have changed that recommendation. We've increased the recommended distance requirement to two miles between these small box discount stores and a distance requirement of one mile between the vape shops and beauty supply stores, which includes nail salons and hair salons, also tattoo shops and body piercing. We're recommending a distance requirement of one mile. And so Chair Wood, if I could, I would like to show you the map that we came up with just so that you can see what we saw when we came up with our recommendation. So if you're able to see this map, this is a map that shows a radius of five miles around our administration building. We just want to get an idea of what we're looking at. So the different colored dots, we've got dollar stores in red and blue and green. What we're not showing are all of the nail salons and hair salons. And within this five-mile radius, we're looking at 45 nail salons and 109 hair salons. And so we've got a lot of different establishments that provide these services. And it's, it's very likely that we could have a situation where this could be overcrowded. So we wanted to take a look at the different distances that were being proposed so that we could come up with a recommendation. The circles around these different dollar stores are illustrated on this map. So the circles in blue are one-mile radius circles. The circles in red is our current recommendation, which is a two-mile radius. And I just wanted to state for the record that we did do some research in other jurisdictions. The City of Stockbridge does have a similar ordinance. They require a one-mile radius around the small box discount stores. We found some others, many had one-mile radius requirements. But we did find, we found one municipality that had a two-mile radius requirement, and we found a second municipality that had a 10,000-foot radius requirement, which is very close to a two-mile radius. So we were very confident in proposing a two-mile radius distance requirement for the small box discount stores and a one-mile radius, this, excuse me, distance requirement for these other specific retail and public service establishments. And also want to specify that these are radius distance requirements. It's not the convoluted walking to the street and walking down the street and so forth like that, but this is as the crow flies, so we thought that that was much better. So with that, Chair, I would be pleased to answer questions.
Okay, before we begin the public hearing aspect of it, are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Holmes, I see your hand. You're muted. Please unmute Commissioner Holmes, please.
Okay.
Okay.
So Stacy, how did you come up with the two miles for the small box retail stores?
So what we looked at, because the comment that we had received in April is that one mile was not adequate. So we started looking at what other jurisdictions around the country had done, and so that's how we got the two miles. Most of the jurisdictions that we researched were one mile, but we found two jurisdictions around the country that had a two-mile requirement or nearly a two-mile requirement. So that's how we came up with the two-mile requirement.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with the, with the hair salons and the vape shops. I don't, I don't, I don't see too many vape shops going up anymore because of the health issues that were, that came out about a year or a year and a half ago. However, I do think the small box retailers, I think we need to extend that to at least five miles. But again, I'm not concerned about the other small businesses.
Thank you.
Okay, was there another comment from another commissioner? Okay, Commissioner Thomas, thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Commissioner Thomas? We need to unmute Commissioner Thomas, please.
I just want to say, Stacy, when we started this discussion, it was because we know we have too many of these operations too close together. And I, too, would like to increase that mileage. One mile, two miles is just not enough. I know there's walking distance between, for some people, these establishments, but we need to spread this out even more, and I am really looking at a five-mile radius. It takes you, what, three to four minutes to ride between a five miles on someone place and another place? And we really need to make sure we're allowing these businesses to be successful. If they are too close, a lot of them won't be successful anyway because you've overpopulated the area in businesses, and the population cannot support it. So there's two things to look at here, not just the radius, but we want the businesses to be successful. So I am really supporting a greater radius between them, and five miles is a good radius.
Commissioner Thomas, let me just say that when we were doing our research, what we found were municipalities around the country that had set these distance requirements. I really didn't find, not to say that they're not out there, but I didn't really find counties that had created an ordinance like we're proposing, which is a county-wide ordinance. And in fact, the municipalities that we found, these distance requirements were just for particular areas of their municipalities. They had included it within zoning overlay districts so that they could target it to areas that they found were being unfairly targeted by these small box discount retailers. The ordinance that was being brought before you this morning is for a rather large county. Henry County is large, and it's county-wide. It's not just targeted to one particular area. So that's why we were confident in recommending a two-mile distance requirement. But I've noted down yours and Commissioner Holmes suggesting to go to five miles.
Well, I'm concerned about the fact that you can drive one mile and see another dollar store. One mile, there's another one. One mile and see another one, and the community is tired of that. You think about what you're saying. We can drive one mile and see the green dollar store. One mile and see the yellow dollar store, and one mile and see the red dollar store. So up and down a strip like 42, in which we do have some problems, we may end up seeing $10 stores just one mile apart. That's my concern. And we shouldn't have to ride up and down one strip and see 10 different dollar stores on the same strip of highway. It doesn't make sense. I know what you're saying, but you've done the research, excuse me. But do we really want to see on one strip of land on one highway, one mile apart, 10 different stores? And that could possibly happen.
Commissioner, I hear that. Let me just also say for the good of our understanding, another way of looking at it, with the two-mile distance requirement, that is going to require that these dollar stores potentially be located in an area that will have to come back before this board with a rezoning request. And that will give the commissioners a chance to look at these on a case-by-case basis and either approve or deny, and if you choose to approve, to put appropriate zoning conditions on these potential rezonings.
I understand that, that we would have another opportunity to make sure that doesn't happen. You're absolutely right. And what I was simply saying is to leave it as it is now. We're leaving the door open to have those type of applications to come before us. You know, one mile, here's one, one mile, here's another one. And yes, we do have the right when they come before the board to turn them down. I understand that. So I'm more comfortable with two, maybe three miles apart, but definitely not one mile, but we shall see.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Russo.
If I could add one thing, the way that we're recommending this, it's with a two-mile distance requirement between the small box discount stores, and we're recommending a one-mile distance requirement between these vape shops and hair salons and other specific public service establishments. And if it's the pleasure of the board to approve this ordinance with something other than the staff's recommendation, we just ask that you clearly include that in your motion.
Okay, okay, thank you. Are any other comments from the board before we begin the public hearing aspect? Commissioner Wilson?
Stacy, I got a question about the way it's written. Is it for standalone stores or is including the ones as in the shopping centers as well?
That is right, right. Commissioner Wilson, that was one of the questions that we had asked earlier, and the board responded and said that we were to make no differentiation between a standalone establishment or an establishment that's located within a strip center. So it does not matter the way we wrote this up.
Okay, but I'm not reading that in the ordinance. So now we're going to start dictating what shopping centers can actually, what stores can go into the shopping center? Do we do that in a zoning, or how does, how does that work?
So we have a press... So we have a precedence in our zoning code regarding pawn shops. So pawn shops can't be within a thousand feet of each other. And that's, that's what we started off with, and then we bumped that up to, to one mile. So we do have instances where we do make that regulation.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I saw Commissioner Barn. You may speak now. Commissioner Barn?
Yes, Stacy, and y'all confirmed a little bit what I was going to ask. But I'm a little concerned that we may have a, a mom-and-pop barber shop where they work out of their house. And, and within a mile, we may have a, a public shopping center. They may want to put a great clips or something in there. They go actually be restricted to do that.
Yes, that would be correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, and my next question, how does this affect the cities? If the city has somebody that has a, a barber shop, and then we have something just outside the city? And I guess it would apply to, it wouldn't matter if it was inside the city or not. Is that correct?
We use the city of Stockbridge as a, a model, and the city used other jurisdictions that we researched as a model. And so the way that that model is written, it does not matter. You do have to count that within the neighboring jurisdiction.
Well, my only other thing, it, it really seems like we putting some restrictions on somebody developing a shopping center, my shopping center. And then they come in there and, and get the zoning for the whole property. And then we put restrictions on what they can and can't do inside shops. I, I, I really have an issue with that.
Yes, sir. And let me just say, Chair, if I may, the, the board, whatever the board, the pleasure of the board is, you guys can do. We, we've already received one comment that we may not be so concerned about these vape shops and hair salons and so forth. So if the board wishes to leave that part out, that is just fine. Just be sure to make that clearly part of your motion.
Okay, thank you. So I saw Commissioner Clemens, and I've got a question. If she is not touching bases on it, Commissioner Clemens?
I think that we need to stick with this, uh, small boxes that we started with in this. I think when you start talking about barber shops or, or hair salons and, and grooming things that are, are health and grooming issues, I think we come into a different situation. So I think we need to give more thought to how we want to do that. Also, you also play an impact on people that, that's their small business. You know, that's how they make their living. People go to school for that. Not that they don't go to school for tattooing or pawn shops, but I think we need to talk more about the pawn shop, the dollar stores, and tattoo parlors, and not deal so much with things that may be a health professional concern. And Patrick, you can weigh in on if, 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 you know, to address those grooming concerns.
Well, from a, from a legal standpoint, it's a, it's a land use. Those businesses would fall within a land use that the county can reasonably restrict. I don't know that there's any legal differentiation between the two. But I, I think ultimately it's the board's decision on, on what ordinance, if any, it wishes to adopt.
And when we're talking about limiting, if we have two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people now and we're expected to have three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and we're talking about people being able to see, you know, to get their haircut or, or get their grooming done, I'm just concerned about adding that with a five-mile radius, which is what we probably need to do with the pawn shops and the, the dollar stores. So I don't think they should be lumped together.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Clemens?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, my thoughts are, I definitely think we should focus only on the small boxes. And I'm open to the five miles and leaving everything else the same. But the question that I have to Mr. Rudessell is, even as we talk about this being a countywide ordinance per se, and it does have, you know, have to consider that of a small box in the city. Still, in, in the case, if the board approves this five-mile radius, there still can be conditional use, conditional uses implemented if, in fact, the board decides that there may need to be an exception. Is that correct? So if you understand the question that I'm asking, I know this is a countywide ordinance. We've got to consider, you know, that with the, with the cities as well. But, you know, again, this says, this is what the board prefers. But if there is some exception, I mean, just like any other, I mean, it would have to come before the board if there are some issues. I just want to get a clarification on that, and then I'll come to Commissioner. Okay, Commissioner Holmes, is that your comment related to that?
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't think, and I know, Patrick, you can, you can confirm this, but I don't think, just because it's countywide, would have any impact on the municipality. Would it, Patrick?
No, we, we can't regulate land use within a city. I, I think when, I think when Stacy said countywide, he was distinguishing it between those jurisdictions that have limited application of these types of regulations.
Yeah, and, and my question, Commissioner Holmes, had, I understand that we have, we, we have jurisdiction over unincorporated. Cities have jurisdiction under their municipal jurisdictions. I'm thinking about the, a business owner who says, okay, there may be, let's say, use the city of Stockbridge, they've got a one-mile radius. And they have a Dollar General that, that they've placed there. And then we have somebody in the unincorporated that wants to put a Dollar General and, you know, in, in a less dense area of some sorts, and it's within the five miles, but it may make sense to this board. Then does this board, again, have, I think I know the answer. Does this board have the authority to issue a, an exception or a conditional use if it makes sense and if it is approved by the board for that particular type scenario? So that's what I, Patrick, if you could help us, or Stacy, I mean, clarify that. Because, you know, again, I, I understand what we're speaking about, so.
So let me just say that the way that we have recommended this ordinance, that is not a provision, and it's not a very, because one can't request a very from a use. But if it's the pleasure of the board to build in the ability to have an exception, then we can do that.
No, I, I don't want to build in an exception. I'm just talking about the process down the road. So I, I'll, Patrick, any thoughts about that, if you understand what question I'm asking? I don't want to spend any time on that because, again, I, I just do think that we should focus on the small boxes, so.
So as I understand your, your question, it's can, if the board adopts this ordinance, could the board then grant a variance to a small box retailer to allow them to open in an area where it would otherwise be prohibited? And I, I think the way our variance ordinance works, and Stacy, you, you correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we can vary uses. I think we can do variances for basically every other aspect. But our ordinance does not allow us to buy variance, authorize a use that's prohibited. So the answer to your question would be no, I don't think the ordinance as presented would allow the board to grant a variance.
Okay, all right, that's what I really wanted to clarify, God. Okay, very good. Are there any other questions or comments from the board before we start the public hearing aspect? Okay, all right, so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our county clerk. And this is a time, again, that we'll allow those who signed up prior to eight forty-five a.m. Those who wish to speak in favor will be given that total time of collective of ten minutes first. And then those who wish to speak in opposition will be granted a total of ten minutes. And after that, that will conclude the public hearing, and then we'll come back to the board. So at this time, Ms. Braun, if you will begin acknowledging those who wants to speak in favor.
Chair Wood, this morning, there had been no, nobody that has signed up in favor or in opposition for this public hearing.
Okay, well, thank you. So acknowledging that we have no one or no one signed in to speak in favor or opposition, that then concludes the public hearing aspect of this public hearing. And we're now back towards the board. So are there any other questions or comments or any thoughts before we accept a motion? I see our county manager, Ms. Matthews. I acknowledge you at this time.
Yes, Chair Wood, I, I have a question for the county attorney. I know that the instructions that were given is that every individual had to sign up prior to eight forty-five. But there is an individual in the waiting room that may be waiting to speak. And so I wanted to defer to Mr. Jockstead or to confirm if we could allow that person in to see if they have comments regarding this item, since this is our first time doing it this way.
I would suggest that we err on the side of allowing public comment. So if there is someone indicating that they wish to make pub, public comment, given the, I guess, given the way this public hearing is working, if there's someone who, who wants to do so, my recommendation would be we allow them to do so.
Thank you. I have not been able to confirm, but the person that has been waiting, so I will admit them into the meeting. And then Chair Wood, if you want to recognize, or if you'd like for me to recognize, the last four digits of the number is four, five, three, eight. But there is not a name associated with the individual. So I will let them in.
Yeah, if you'll go ahead and, and manage it, because you've got the additional information. So please proceed.
Absolutely, thank you. Good morning. We've just admitted an individual with the last four digits of four, five, three, eight. Could you please state your name for the record? Again, if you've just entered the meeting with a Q two, seven, four, five, three, eight, would you please state your name for the record? Chair Wood, the individual has left the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, okay, so thank you. And that does officially conclude our public hearing aspect of it. So at this time, are there any additional comments or thoughts from the board? Okay, Commissioner Thomas. Okay, please unmute, Commissioner Thomas, please. Commissioner Thomas?
My original concern, as I stated, was about the small box retailers. And I think we should just address today the small box retailers and not try to get into the personal gloomings as stated before. Let's take another opportunity to look at plazas and how these plazas put different clientele in there on a different type of resolution. But today, we definitely need to look at the small box retailers and how this resolution centered around them.
Okay, thank you. So any other questions or comments from the board? So any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, the floor is now, oh, wait a minute, before we go there, I see Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Wilson. Please unmute Commissioner Wilson, please. I'm sorry. Commissioner Wilson?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, another question about the square footage. I go back and I'm scrolling down. I think it's twelve thousand or less. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's small box. The definition that we're recommending is a retail store with a floor area less than twelve thousand square feet and so forth.
So with a Dollar General type that has a grocery store built in, right? Are they going to exceed the twelve thousand, or is that, you think they were in the?
There were a few Dollar General, fresh markets, or what have you. These types of stores, if they are greater than twelve thousand square feet, this ordinance would not apply to them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I see Commissioner Barn, then we're coming to Commissioner Holmes. Okay, Commissioner Barn, saw your hand first. Please unmute Commissioner Barn, please. Thank you.
While we're talking about square footage, what is a normal-sized square footage for a dollar store?
So it's my understanding, just operating off of memory, and you know how that goes, that our dollar stores tend to range between ten and twelve thousand square feet.
So probably what we go do is just add to the square footage on the building and we end up right back where we are. I, I think we can handle this with planning, with, with zoning issues. We can just vote what we want, deny what we don't want. I, I don't know. I've got some concerns about shopping centers being hurt.
Okay, okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Gary just asked my question. I was Googling it, and I, I, I see seventy-five hundred square feet to twenty-five, twenty-five thousand square feet. Seventy-five hundred square feet is the, the average Dollar, Dollar, Dollar General store.
Okay.
So, yeah, Gary asked a question, and I think we should raise that to at least fifteen thousand. And I'm prepared to make a motion unless somebody else has a question.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
So if the dollar stores decided to put in one with twelve thousand square feet, and if they added a three-thousand-square-foot storage facility in the back, are those two counted together or separate? Or we look and tell the square footage on the property or under heated space?
The way the ordinance is written, and this is the, the model ordinance that we followed, it's a floor area that's less than twelve thousand square feet.
So the retail floor area?
No, it's a floor area. So I would, I would add the, the sales area, the, the public area, the storage area, and everything.
So total square foot on the property then?
Within, within the, the establishment.
Because they could put two different buildings. And it see the, it, it see the square footage? If they wanted to use an additional building for storage?
And I'm not saying that there's not a way to get around it. But if they want to not be included in our definition, however they choose to do it, then the ordinance would not apply to them.
Okay, I just, I thank you.
Okay, any other comments before Commissioner Barn?
Yes, yes, y'all got me unmuted.
Yes.
Okay, Stacy, why should we even put a square foot minimum on that? Why just have small box stores and identify Dollar Generals and that sort of thing? And, and not even have any square footage at all on them?
I, I understand your question, Commissioner. And so what we have to do is to define what we're attempting to regulate. So before today, we didn't make a differentiation between a dollar store and just general retail or consumer goods, sales and service. So we're having to make that definition. And we're following this model ordinance that's been adopted across the country and even in the city of Stockbridge. So we have to define what it is that we're attempting to regulate. And we do have to draw the line somewhere. So we went along with the model ordinance.
Okay. So we, all right, so let me, Commissioner Barn, you still, any, any additional comments? You've got the mic.
Not just time, maybe in a minute.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens has now got the.
You know, we can go on and on and figure out why to do it or why not to do it. I think we have to move forward with doing something. If it's taking out the square feet and go ahead with it. You know, if a, a small box wants to come in and challenge the ordinance, they'll do whatever they need to do. But not only that, consumer drives the market. So if we have an ordinance in place, anyway, they're not going to come. Or if they come, you know, consumers don't have to shop there. And so I think we have to do something today. And it sounds like we're going around and around and around. But I would hope that we can just move forward with something today and deal with, you know, a fifteen thousand square feet coming back later. So if we could take the square feet off, I think we would be fine to start with something.
Commissioner, Chair, if you want to follow through on to that, what we would recommend is that the motion not take out the square footage altogether. If you want to make it something different, if you want to bump it up to fifteen thousand, that's fine. But if you take it off altogether, then we're talking about big box discount stores. And, and I don't think that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for that clarity.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, here are none. The floor is now open for a motion. Commissioner Holmes, I know you acknowledged it first, so please proceed.
I want to make a motion to restrict dollar stores slash small box retail stores to fifteen thousand square feet in a five-mile radius. in a five mile radius.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, the floor, uh, is now, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hands by signaling or raising your hand. Okay, uh, okay, I think that was a unanimous decision, just to make sure were there any oppositions to that motion? Okay, so it was a unanimous decision and, um, thank you all. And I forgot to call upon the clerk this time for all of the readings, but we'll make sure we get back to that later. All right, that was a unanimous, yes.
Stacy, that was taking out the, um, the other stuff. This is just small box, right? Just want to clarify that. Okay, thank you.
I got it, I got it. Thank you very much.
Okay, all right. So thank you all. Um, so thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Rudy Self for that presentation. So we'll now move into our next agenda item, which is item ten, uh, which is a human resources resolution to improve the and adopt the Henry County Employee Benefit and Medical Insurance Plans for 2020 and 2021. And we'll invite, uh, Mr. Harold Cooper, um, to begin that and understand, uh, and have already heard from Mr. Mike Gases. So we welcome you both today for that presentation. So, Mr. Cooper, you may begin it.
Thank you, Madam Board Chair and Madam Vice Chair and distinguished board members. Uh, I today will be presenting to you a resolution of Henry County Board of Commissioners to approve the, the Henry County Employee Benefit and Medical Insurance Plans for 2020 and 2021. At the conclusion of my presentation, if there's any questions, myself along with Mr. Gases of the Gases Insurance Group, Mr. Chris Clark and Mr. James Ford of Epic Insurance and Consultants will answer those questions collectively. The resolution reads, whereas the Henry County Employee Benefit and Medical Insurance, Insurance Plans for its employees, pre-sixty-five-year-old retirees and their families shall be renewed for the coverage plan year effective June first, 2020 through May thirty-first, 2021. And whereas county staff consisting of representatives from Human Resources, Budget, Finance, and the County Manager's Office reviewed renewals from Kaiser and Cigna, and whereas Cigna negotiated final medical renewal reflected.
It's the lane place we go to, no, it's the lanes.
A six point four eight percent increase based on the current medical plans. A one point four eight eight million dollar increase. And whereas Kaiser negotiated final medical renewal is of zero percent increase with no benefit change to last year's policy. And whereas Cigna's negotiated final dental renewal is of zero percent rate increase this year. And whereas Cigna provides the vision insurance with no rate increase this year. And whereas Cigna provides the employee assistance program, which renews in September with no anticipated rate increase this year. And whereas Cigna will provide eighty thousand dollars in wellness funds. And whereas group basic and optional life insurance will remain with AXA, now known as Equitable, with no rate increase for the upcoming year. And whereas the administration of family medical leave will remain under Cigna under a rate guarantee. And whereas short-term, short and long-term disability insurance will remain under Cigna under a rate guarantee for the coming year. And whereas Charge Snyder will continue to provide flexible spending account, dependent care flexible spending account, HRA, which is health reimbursement account, and Cobra for the coming year. And now therefore be it resolved that the Henry County Board of Commissioners approves the Cigna and Kaiser plans renewals for medical insurance for the dental and vision insurance, Cigna for EAP, AXA, which is known as Equitable, for group life and optional life insurance, Cigna for long and short-term disability insurance, and FIMLA administration, and Charge Snyder for FSA, HRA, and Cobra for the upcoming year. Be it further resolved that the Henry County Board of Commissioners will incur one hundred percent of the medical premium increase for this annual renewal at a cost to the county of one million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. In closing, I'd like to say continuity and comfort was our aim in renewing with Kaiser as well as Cigna. During this tumultuous time, we have one hundred, one thousand, two hundred and sixteen employees who are insurance subscribers of Cigna. And we have three hundred and thirty-eight employees who are insurance subscribers of Kaiser. So continuity and consistency during this COVID nineteen was our aim. And we didn't want to cause any additional anxiety on our employees. So do we have any questions at this time?
Okay, uh, we've heard the presentation of the resolution. Are there any questions or comments from the board? All right, Commissioner Wilson? And Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, last year we talked about the, um, twenty-five seventy-five, and once the employees had the biometric screening completed, we pay, we picked up the twenty-five percent. So how many of those employees are out there paying their additional twenty-five percent?
The additional employees, I have that, just give me one second on that, and I'll defer to Mr. Clark as well if he has any additional information.
Yeah, I, I don't know that answer off the top of my head. I apologize.
Commissioner Wilson, we'll get that information. We'll go on through the questions, then we'll get you a, a number on the number of employees that actually had to pay that additional twenty-five percent.
But they will be continuing paying that extra twenty-five percent as well, correct?
The way that the resolution is written, they should, yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner Wilson, let, let me go back because it actually is not included in the resolution. So if that is the will of the board, I think we went back and forth last year because initially we were going to require employees who did not consent to a biometric screening to pay a higher rate. I think the board determined that that was more of a penalty to employees. And so the decision was made that for those employees who elected to have a biometric screening done, their rate would be less. And those employees who did not obviously would not pay the, the same amount, but it would not be considered a penalty. So if it's the will of the board, we can certainly add that back to the resolution. Um, the only thing is that I'll need to set up with, and, and this is where Chris and Epic is, they're gonna have to help me through because we are close to the point of where we've got to do open enrollment. And if we're going to require the biometric screening, or if we're gonna do biometric screening, that's something that will need to get set up fairly quickly. And I'm not sure that we'll get it done prior to the expiration of our insurance. Now, we can always go back, uh, we can go ahead and have the board approve the insurance and then add the stipulation that if employees have not had the biometric screening by a certain date, be it September one, October one, then those employees will pay a different rate.
Okay.
Yeah, what we could do, um, county manager would be to include as part of the enrollment and some type of attestation by the employee of their intent to get the screening and then set the rates on that basis and then follow through with that through the summer as time permitted.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, um, are there any other questions from the board?
I have a comment left.
Uh, let's see. Um, sorry, okay, so I see, uh, let's see, Commissioner Thomas, and then we'll come to you. I think Mr. Gases will come to you after Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Thomas.
I wanted to know, and I don't remember because this was taking place when I had just joined the board on last year. What was the rate of increase last year from Cigna? What was that increase?
Last year was fourteen percent.
And this year is six point four percent?
Six point four eight.
Six point four eight percent. Um, are we seeing this reduction due to our medical facility that we have? Is that what we are, can we account for that in that reduction and increase? How has that affected the increase, having the medical facility, um, here for our employees?
So Commissioner Thomas, I'll jump in and then I'll defer to Mike and/or Chris to, to talk more about it. Um, one of the things that we've got to remember is that our wellness center has not been in long enough for us to really see a true benefit. Um, one of the things that we talked about with the board when we initially start talking about insurance is that the six point four eight was not the initial amount that Cigna came back with. Um, and I hate to just say we have a good team that negotiated them down, but our claim history is still very hot. And when we have very large claim numbers, it drives our healthcare costs. And so we're hoping that once we get through this full year, we will be able to report back to the board um, what savings we're, we're hoping to capture as a result of our employees utilizing, um, the wellness center versus going to the emergency room and the county being on the hook for paying a much higher out-of-pocket cost. Um, so I think the question that you're answering, we'll have a better idea once we get through, um, another year with the wellness center to see some, some reductions. Some of the other things that we've talked about internally at a staff level when it pertains to insurance is that we will look at allowing our health facility to conduct our onboarding for our new employees. And so that will help to cut down on some of the costs that we're paying out right now, um, to other providers, which we could do in-house at our wellness center. Um, Chris, I don't know if there's anything else additionally you can add to Commissioner Thomas's question.
Yes, there is. Um, so last week, we had a call with Cooper and he had instructed us to work with Health Stat to get a preliminary result, which we have received. And they're estimating about twelve dollars of savings per, per, um, encounter at the clinic. And so that's, that's a very preliminary and estimated number. But as we, um, uh, come up on the end of the first year of the clinic being open, we're, um, Health Stat will be doing a, a very thorough report a, around that, and we will have that available in the summer and we can present that to the, uh, you know, to, to the county manager's team. And then if, uh, if you would like, we can, and a summarized version of that to the board at a meeting in the summer.
Um, one other question, the eighty thousand dollar wellness funds, how is that used?
Uh, Mr. Cooper, you want us to answer that?
Uh, we can answer it collectively. Uh, we have all type of initiatives, uh, Commissioner Thomas, that we, uh, incorporate with our employees in terms of get fit, uh, contests and things of that nature. Uh, right before the pandemic, uh, started, we started another Biggest Loser Contest. Uh, and we're also doing lunch and learns as well in reference to, uh, ensuring that there is holistic wellness that is being taught and not just from a physical standpoint, where we're addressing all aspects of wellness.
Well, my, the reason for that question, I was wondering if those funds could be redirected to the clinic to make better use of, to try and attract more employees there to reduce these, um, claims that we're having outside of the clinic. So if that's a possibility, that should be explored. Because if we're going to maintain the cost of clinic and constantly see the increase of insurance, and I know you said give a year to before we can see true results, we need to look at every aspect that we can look at to reduce these costs. And that may be something that needs to be done and we need to reconsider.
Absolutely, Commissioner Thomas, and we'll definitely look at that. And one of the other things that we've also talked to both providers about, because we are with Cigna and Kaiser, um, what resources can they provide to the county as, because we are definitely a client of both. I know that Kaiser has definitely tried to make some efforts in terms of offering services, not only to the Kaiser employees, but to the non-Kaiser employees. And they have several, uh, wellness programs that they offer at their facilities. Um, one of the things that I've heard from a number of employees is that we have a Kaiser location here in Henry County and that there is a desire to have more wellness activities at that facility versus employees having to travel outside of the county. And so that's one of the things that we will continue to push our Kaiser team on in terms of providing some services for the employees. But we definitely can look at the wellness funds that are coming in to see if we can at least send some of those funds over to our wellness facility to, to work on reducing some of our claim costs.
Thank you. All right, um, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Anything else? Okay, the, the only, uh, other question, I think this may be more directed to Mr. Clark. Um, again, I think in our, uh, a couple of months, about a month or so ago, we gave an update on the clinic of the potential impact that we can predict, um, if, since fans, since the clinic is now open, the employee clinic is now open to family members. Can you review that, um, that thought and, um, that statement as we think towards what the clinic can do, especially as it relates to our healthcare insurances as well?
Um, I apologize that I don't fully follow the question. Could you restate it, please?
I think, yes, can you restate, um, the, the potential impact that we may see because the employee clinic is now open to family members now?
We would anticipate that the, the impact would increase, um, obviously the more, you know, to the other commissioners' statement as well. If we make efforts to increase the utilization of the clinic, it just serves to benefit the cost savings and, but there's also a convenience factor too. So it's a benefit as well as a cost savings that would flow through that. It's hard, generally you don't get as high a participation among family members as you do employees because of the convenience. Uh, but, you know, we can continue to monitor that and, and report back to the board in terms of utilization. That's one of the items that would be included in this annual report I was mentioning that would be available in the summer, uh, which would, where we could look at the percentages of use by the different eligible groups.
And, and Chair Wood, if you, and this may hit to what part of your question is, one of the reasons that we opened the wellness center to, um, family members is that based on our last utilization report and briefing with our broker and with Epic, we found that the employees were not driving the increase in costs. It was actually, um, dependents and family members that were driving the cost. So that's one of the reasons we've taken some efforts to push wellness, not only among certain employees, but with the family members. And if you all will recall, I think it was early January and I could be off, um, that we did have a employee, um, health fair at Heritage, um, at the Heritage Building. And one of the reasons again was because we were seeing in the information that was being provided to us by our providers is that again, the driving cost was not the employees, which we had been spending so much time focusing on, it was their families. And so that was why we did decide to open the clinic for families, um, being able to receive service.
Well, thank you for circling back because that's like, I knew something was there, I just couldn't recall, so I appreciate that. Okay, um, let's see, let's see what you got. Uh, I'm sorry, um, we'll go to, uh, we'll go ahead and Mr. Clark, and then we'll go to Mr. Gases. Who else someone said they wanted to add something? Who was that? Oh, Mr. Cooper, I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Cooper and then Mr. Gases.
Uh, in reference to the biometric screening and the question that Commissioner Wilson raised, uh, forty-six employees in total who did not participate in the biometric screen. Four at the seventy-five percent rate and forty-two at the eighty percent rate. So I just wanted to answer his question.
Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate that, you bringing that back. Mr. Gases, and then we'll come to Commissioner Thomas, uh, Mr. G.
Yes, I'd like to add that, at the request of the county manager and in conjunction with HR, a lot of work we've done of putting together a calendar that lists all the wellness events, educational seminars we're gonna have to, to show, it would better show where that eighty thousand dollars wellness money is gonna be spent. And the county manager, Ms. Matthews, wanted all this on one calendar so you had a glance, you could look at it and tell, uh, really how hard HR is working to do the wellness and work on wellness and have agreed to have the events at different locations, uh, maybe at courthouses and places like that. So if, if we could share that calendar with the commissioners, I think would be good for them to look at.
Thank you. I think that would be great information. Thank you, Mr. Gases. Okay, Commissioner Thomas.
Well, as our county manager stated, that our cost has been driven up by family members' usage. And one of the things I know that I talked about months ago is the operation hours. And operation hours were outside of the time period when a mother and children could probably make better use of our facility. And I have asked that we look at that again to make it accessible to, um, our family members. And in addition to that, you have eighty thousand dollars. Why can't you transfer some of that money over to a Saturday day and pay for some Saturday hours so that these, uh, parents can bring their children there on Saturdays or in the afternoon so they can bring their children in the afternoon to therefore cut back on some of the claims that we're paying for outside of the normal working hours and they'll reduce our percentage of increase by six. I just think we need to redirect some dollars, redirect some operating times and think about how we can make this, um, facility more accessible to our. Accessible to our family members. Because even on some of the health initiatives, it's not during the time period when some of the family members can take advantage of it. And I don't know, I would love to see how many employees actually taking advantage of some of the initiatives that are out there. That you all are putting. I give them the information about it, about the lunch and learns, but how many people actually coming? How are we actually using the dollars that are there when we can redirect it in another way and make better use of it is my question. And I know I've asked for some of this months ago, but we kind of talk about it, but don't get results back. About how we're going to use those dollars and things.
All right. Okay, I see Mr. Cooper's hand up. So, Mr. Cooper, you may proceed.
Uh, Commissioner Thomas, I concur. You did request us looking at the expanded hours. We're currently still doing that. Uh, the pandemic kind of set us back a little bit because there were some things. From Healthstat that kind of restricted us as well because they had certain offices closed as well. But in terms of uh, frequency rate, uh, our last report was in March. And I can honestly say that our employees, they're still using the clinic. Uh, our, we had a hundred and ninety-two appointments in March, a hundred and seventy-eight of them were kept. So we're at ninety-two percent. Uh, in terms of days, there's still Monday and Tuesday is those hot days between the hours of twelve and two. Uh, Monday appointments in the month of March was at sixty-one, which is thirty-two percent. And on Tuesday, it was at fifty-one, which is twenty-six percent. So we hear you loud and clear. And now that our new norm is the environment that we're working in right now. We've uh, renewed those discussions with Healthstat and we're getting that taken care of.
Thank you.
Additionally, Chair Wood, I do want to add that we also did add a telemed function to Healthstat. So for those parents or employees that may not want to physically come into the clinic. Um, our nurse practitioner is available through telemed. And so that is another option that we have made available. Um, to our employees. But Commissioner Thomas, we hear you loud and clear in terms of adding some additional operation or operating hours. Um, on the weekend. And again, that is something that we have been in conversation with Healthstat on for the last couple of months.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Thomas?
No, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner, uh, uh, Ms. Matthews.
Chair Wood, it's not a question. It's more of just a point of clarification. Um, I didn't know this in the resolution. There is one omission that we'll need to go back and add. Uh, we do require that uh, we have a spousal surcharge and a tobacco surcharge for those employees. Um, that elect to um, either consume tobacco. And so that needs to be added to the resolution as well. That we will continue with those surcharges um, for those employees.
Okay, all right, um, that is duly noted. Okay, uh, anything else from um, the staff or to the staff and those that are here with us? Okay, I'm seeing none here and none. The floor is now open for a motion. Okay, Commissioner Holmes. He's muted. I think he just made the motion. I'm sorry. Okay, I need to understand what the motion is because we've heard about um, the biometric seventy-five, thirty-five. We've heard about the adding the spousal and tobacco surcharge to what is existing. So I just need to get a clarification with the motion states.
I motion to approve the um, the healthcare benefits with the surcharges. As well as um, the tobacco, the, the, um, um, tobacco surcharges at a hundred percent.
Okay, um, so uh, we, we got a motion and then I think I saw a second from Commissioner Thomas. Um, further um, discussions or clarification. Okay, uh, Commissioner Wilson.
So Commissioner Holmes, I was asking about the biometrics, give these people opportunity to come and have that done. Are you including that into your motion as well?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and include that into the motion. However, I wouldn't want to make it um, mandatory for the employees.
I think it's an option though, is what we did last year as well. It's just an option for them to come in and have that. Uh, screening done to, to, to excuse that twenty-five percent that they was paying on the county would pick that up. So now if we do it this time around and give them opportunity to come back in, I think they said, uh, up into October. To that way they can let the county pick up a hundred percent as well if they face still paying their twenty-five percent.
I agree, I agree with um, with Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm gonna ask our county clerk to clarify that motion for record before we take a vote. So, or someone to clarify the vote. If it's not the um, county clerk, it's someone, just to make sure that we clarify that.
So Stephanie, if you'd like, I can jump in and, and tell you what I think I understood. So Commissioner Holmes has made a motion to approve the resolution as written with the following additions. We're gonna add the spousal surcharge, the tobacco surcharge, and then require but not make meant, not require, I'm sorry. Include a additional um, cost for those employees who do not participate in the biometric screening. And so right now we're gonna fund the insurance at a hundred percent for those employees who do not have the biometric screening. They will pay the twenty-five versus the county paying seventy-five. Is that correct, Mr. Holmes?
Correct.
Okay, let's clarify, those will be able to uh, they may not, may not be in the motion, but just declared that they have until October to go through that. Um, that was the other challenge that, you know.
That is correct.
Time, okay. All right, so we've heard a motion and a second and we heard the clarification of the motion. So um, any further discussion or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that is a unanimous decision on that um, revised resolution. So thank you much, board. I thank you, Mr. Clark, Mr. Gases and all the others who joined in on that discussion. Okay. So we'll now move into our next item, which is regarding the coroner's office, um, which is a resolution to construct the. Coroner's Office building in the amount of four hundred and two thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. And authorizing a budget amendment for the use of the fund balance if necessary. So I will ask Mr. Donald Cleveland if he's on board. I'm sorry. Okay, so uh, whoever's gonna make that presentation, please come forward now.
Chair Wood is actually gonna be the deputy county manager, Brad Johnson.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners again.
Okay, everyone again.
I'm Chair Commissioners, uh, and I did have Donald here with me. He just got called out uh, by nine-one-one to uh, in this incident. So uh, as we talked about our last meeting a month ago, that we have established a temporary morgue due to the situation we're going through. Uh, and we have been planning for this for over a year now. It is part of our capital improvement. However, the, the emergent need has come up with the situation we're in and the lack of space we have. To go to other counties and, and typically we, we go to other, other facilities outside our county. And, and it's definitely important that we definitely take care of our citizens from birth till, till the end of, end of life stages. Uh, today I brought back to you, which uh, had been working, I guess, for the, since January. Um, we sent out through the purchasing department, this proposal for RFP number twenty dash eighteen. For the project of building a, a modest morgue facility and office for the, for the coroner's uh, office. Um, the proposals came back uh, with Steelco being the most responsive at four hundred and two thousand four hundred and fifteen. I will actually show you a quick rendering of that to show you it is a modest um, facility. We located at our uh, DOT complex where we have. The utilities and everything already ready. Uh, small rendering of it and it shows um. Just an office space, exam, exam room and storage uh, for this project. Um, something definitely needed in the uh, in the county. We have never had a, a, a facility or morgue for our coroner's office. We've been many years since I've been here. Uh, we used to use the Piedmont Henry facility. This facility there has, has been there for thirty years. And definitely a growing population. Just some statistical data, uh, in two thousand eighteen, four hundred and sixty-seven corner cases, four hundred and eighty-eight last year. And we're trending about five hundred, which is average about a five percent increase per year. Uh, on the, on the cases for the coroner. So with that being said, the recommendation that we move forward. Taking the money from fund balance that can be readjusted once the capital's improvement plan is, is funded, we can be paid. Back to that fund balance because it is part of the capital plan. Uh, the cost four hundred and two thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars to Steelco Buildings Incorporated. And I'll take any questions.
Okay, uh, Commissioners, are there any questions? Um, Commissioner Thomas, I see.
What is the capacity of the building, Brad, Mr. Johnson?
The capacity of the uh, the facility is uh, around ten. Uh, Commissioner, we don't have the, it is actually one um, large cooling unit, it's not individual spaces. Will have stretchers in, in that facility uh, to occupy. We'll have a viewing area for identification and also exam area for the police department and the investigative cases that come in. Also a family room for the family to come in for, for death notifications and, and uh, you know, identification of the body.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Commissioner Holmes and Commissioner Clemens.
Brad, what were we paying Piedmont and uh, what do we anticipate saving um, by building our own morgue?
You know, the savings, Commissioner, um, we were paying more outside facilities. For example, we had to go to other counties. Uh, we have, we had some contracts with Clayton County, a funeral home there, uh, the morgue in Butts County, the, we've actually used Newton. Uh, on, on several cases. Uh, basically, where it's been worked in the past, we've had a call and see who has available space when we have had that. We have not used Piedmont in a while because their capacity with their growth is definitely overwhelming their facilities. So they hadn't been able to take county cases. Uh, just since we've used the uh, the temporary uh, less than a month ago. Uh, we've definitely had several of the five, the seven cases that we've had to use our temporary morgue. So. I don't have that price, what it costs per day. Uh, however, that even option of paying with the COVID going on. Is when we got notified upfront, which caused the emergency last month, that, that no one would take our, our bodies because of the COVID nineteen. That's when we had to go out and purchase a temporary cooler because uh, even the ones we had had service uh, agreements with. They're like, you know, we're, we don't have capacity and we're not taking these, these particular ones. So. It is not gonna pay for itself immediately. It will over time, but you know, the savings uh, is gonna be the, the service to our citizens. I'll pass your question, Commissioner.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes still has the floor.
So um, so, so given that information you just provided, um, what safety measures have we put in place for the coroner's office? Um, does he have um, the appropriate um, attire, hazmat and all those type of things, PPA?
He has the same PPA we use through the fire rescue services. He has the full facials, gowns. He has the full isolation, just like you do to healthcare providers. Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Holmes? Okay, all right, Commissioner Clemens.
So Sheri, before we were having our intergovernmental agreements with other places that we had to store our bodies. Um, make sure that we have something in place if other communities have to use our morgue. Um, as well as make sure that we have something in place that our morgue is not taken up by um, accidents on Highway seventy-five. And then when people that live in Henry County um, demise, there's no place for them and they have to then be shipped out of the county again. So we need to make sure that we um, set aside a reserve if it's gonna be one or two or three. Um, for those emergencies, but making sure that um, this money that we're investing is specifically used for while the intent.
Okay, uh, all right. Okay, I see Commissioner Wilson and I have a question as well. Commissioner Wilson?
So on the building design, Brad, is it designed to expand cooler space for the future?
Yes, sir. We feel that the cooler space is provided uh, at this time would give us at least ten years uh, of service capacity. Uh, the length of service capacity for, for that, that you know, in ten years would definitely be replaced, but also. The cooler is gonna be outs, external. So the, the external being beside the building, but not attached to the building. There'll be a little, little space in between. And we done this by going around and, and visiting other areas and seeing what best practices are out there. And it was definitely recommended not to have an internal uh, uh. Cooling facility. It'd be an under covered area right behind the building.
So I, I guess my question is, can we expand the number of bodies it can hold for future?
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, we definitely, expansion is definitely, we're not, we're not locked into any footprint. We could actually expand any, any part of building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, well, thank you, Commissioner Wilson. And that was the question I had as well. All right, um, any other questions from any of the Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion. See Commissioner Wilson? And I then saw Commissioner Clemens as a second. Um, are there any other discussions or comments? Okay, all in favor, please, um, raise your hand by, or signal by raising your hand. Okay, that is a unanimous um, hand raising. So thank you um, for that. Okay, uh, thank you again. I appreciate that update. Okay, we'll now move into our next item, which is a transit discussion and is to approve an intergovernmental agreement. Um, between Henry County and the Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority. And we welcome Mr. Salters to make that presentation. So again, we ask everyone, if you will, please mute your phones so that we can hear clearly without little feedback. So thank you.
The Chair and Commissioners, uh, I bring before you an intergovernmental agreement between Atlanta Region Transit Link Authority and the Henry County Board of Commissioners. What this plan is gonna do is the transit master plan for Henry County. Um, currently we have allocated from Federal Transit Administration funds to pay for the plan. Um, the inter-agreement, the intergovernmental agreement, excuse me, will allow automatic transfer from FTA to ATL. To complete the master plan and we will be responsible for a twenty percent match. Uh, the total cost of the plan, they estimated about a six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Five hundred and twenty thousand dollars will go directly to FTA, excuse me, to ATL. The hundred and thirty thousand will come from Henry County. Now, myself and Mr. Baker have reached out to the other cities in Henry County. To talk about an agreement where they would pay a portion of the match. Um, as of this moment, we have not heard anything else. Um, and I will take any questions you have.
Okay, well, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Holmes.
So, did you say that we would transition from the Henry County Transit to the ATL?
No, the, the funds that comes from FTA, we're allocating that five hundred and twenty thousand to directly to ATL so they can procure the project.
Okay, and, and I just wanted to also uh, make a point of clarification as well. I think I heard you clearly say that our county match is already in our budget. Um, and has been allocated to us from FTA. And again, our match is a hundred and thirty thousand. That's coming again from funding that's already there. Is that correct?
That is correct. Any unused funds, um, they will send back once the master plan is complete.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, um, Commissioner Clemens, your, your question.
He, he answered it, that the funds that are not used in the master plan will come back. And in this master plan, we are included. So can we make the master plan or the purpose of the master plan public so people will understand? Why we're investing in to be a part of it?
Yes, when that is complete, we will definitely make that available for everyone to see. And we're hoping that we do get some feedback and some contribution from the cities as well. Because this is gonna affect every city in Henry County, not just, you know, the entire county itself.
Yeah, okay. And, and I would like you to expand again. That master plan will involve cit, uh, citizens will have an opportunity to engage, correct? Um, I think that we need to clarify what we're talking about when we say a master plan. I know we've had a feasibility study. But this, can you elaborate more on what the plan really does and will do, especially to engage not just county, cities, but also state?
So the government plan, they would achieve the goal of developing the plan for the county. Um, what we will do is ATL is gonna procure the project. They're gonna put out the RFP. Uh, we will be responsible for having a team involved. They will have a project manager from ATL. There'll be numerous public involvement meetings to talk about the plan throughout the process. Like the timeline is roughly about twelve months.
And Chair Wood, just as they.
Go ahead.
As further point of clarification. As, can you hear me, Chair Wood?
Yes.
Um, just further clarification, I think it leads to what Commissioner Clemens is referencing. As part of the overall plan, there will be a stakeholder and technical committee, which will include not only. Um, individuals from the county and city level, but will. but will also include citizens who want to be a part of this planning process. It will not be done in a vacuum where we're just going to turn the funds over to ATL. They're going to select a consultant and then we get a study. And so will definitely be benchmarks that will be identified throughout the process that we will bring back to the board just as an update, but we definitely need citizen involvement throughout this process. As you all are aware, we've already done a feasibility study to determine if transit is feasible in the county. And I want to make sure, because I know we have a number of people that are viewing online and we have a number, number of people that are participating. The only thing the transit feasibility study has done is identify that we need to look at alternative sources outside of just building roads. And so when we start talking about a transit plan, we're going to look at all avenues of transit. Not only buses, we're going to look at every form of transit to be considered by this board once that plan is completed, but it will definitely, definitely include lots of involvement from the public, lots of involvement from the board and lots of involvement from our city representatives.
All right, and Ms. Matthews, will you continue to elaborate that? Again, when we talk about fixed routes, we've got to, you know, include that in our discussions for now and into the future, but also how this ties into similar to what the comprehensive transportation plan is. You've got to have some priorities because the transit now is being looked at. And in order to get some state and federal funding down the road, we've got to take these steps. So if you can clarify that and emphasize that, I sure would appreciate it.
Well, I will reemphasize because you were right on in terms of part of our comprehensive transportation plan is to identify all modes of transportation. And I think Mr. Baker, when we get to his presentation, you'll hear more about that. But outside of building roads, we have to look at sidewalk improvements, we have to look at transit options. And so this is one part of the overall plan. One of the things that we are constantly asked when funding sources become available is this part of an approved plan. And so we need to have a transit plan in place. We need to update our CTP so that we know what our priorities are because our boards have done a phenomenal job identifying what our road projects are based off of these approved plans that we already have in place. One thing that I want to reiterate to the board, because I know that there may be some concern in terms of is the timing right for us to pursue this type of investment? As Ty has indicated, we've already allocated funding within his respective budget, but we will go back and reevaluate this as we move through the process. It's important for us to recognize that we are going through a pandemic and a lot of our revenue streams that we've been accustomed to receiving, there may be somewhat of a slight delay in how we're receiving those funds and there may be some reductions that we've got to revisit. We've been in contact with not only Georgia Department of Transportation, but also with the Atlanta Regional Commission. And I think all of the board members are aware that the governor has instituted a 14% mandatory cut across the board for all state agencies. We are comfortable that we don't foresee any issues with the funding that's already been, I'm going to say guaranteed to the county for both of the studies that we're looking to discuss today. But we also want to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars and we want to make sure that we are not advising you all to pursue a plan knowing that we may have some funding shortfalls in the very near future. I think we're, we're definitely at a point that we've got to look at some other transportation options. And Sherwood, you mentioned fixed routes. Because Henry County has continued to grow as a community, there are funding categories and funding sources that we are no longer, no longer eligible for because our population numbers have increased. There is rural dollars that we previously were receiving that we are no longer receiving. And one of the reasons that we instituted the fixed route up in the Fairview area is because one of the things that we've been told is that we've got to look at creating more fixed route opportunities because you're not going to be eligible to receive the rural funding that we've received in the past. And so part of the transit study and part of what Sam is going to be working on with the comprehensive transportation plan is to figure out how do we mirror all of our transportation alternatives? And how do we create one plan and create options for everyone that lives here in Henry County?
Okay, thank you. All right, let's see, Commissioner Clemens, I think you had your hand raised. Did you have any additional comments? Okay, anyone else? Okay.
I just want to add also...
Yes.
Just want to add also with this plan, everybody to keep in mind that we are part of that 13-county ATL agreement that's mandated by law. So this is going to keep us at the table in terms of transportation in the future.
All right, thank you. All right. Commissioner Clemens, yes?
I just want to make sure that we reiterate to the public that this is not to bring more transportation into the county or buses into the county without public input. This study is to say that we're hiring someone to make sure that public input is captured. And this is a time for you to speak up because whatever data comes out of this is the data that gives us the directions of how we need to move as a county. But if you don't participate, then we don't know how to proceed. So no participation means that we go forward or you voice your opinion so that we have some instructions on how the citizens want us to proceed. So this is very, very, very important that we participate in and it's very important that our constituents participate in letting us know what they want in the county.
Well-taken, very good. Commissioner Clemens, any other additional comment? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion. Okay, I see Commissioner Holmes made a motion.
A second.
Okay, I think Commissioner Clemens made a second. Any further discussion or comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, that looks to be unanimous, so thank you very much and appreciate that presentation, Mr. Salters. And thank you for making sure we stay focused. Okay? All right, well, now moving to the next item, which is a transportation, transportation planning resolution on an intergovernmental agreement by the county and also the Atlanta Regional Commission. And we're inviting up Mr. Sam Baker to make that presentation.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Baker.
You know that Henry County developed a comprehensive transportation plan back in 2016. Since then, the county's population has grown and it has affected the traffic congestion. And so I'm here to suggest for your consideration that we update the county's transportation plan. This will include a reassessment of the existing transportation infrastructure and then review the transportation project list that is in the plan and then come up with a new project list, which may include keeping some projects, adding some additional projects, dropping some projects, making some modifications to existing project list and to address the transportation needs of the county going forward. So to update the transportation plan, we have an estimate that would cost about $625,000. For this plan update, there is federal transportation planning funds available from the Federal Highway Administration through the Georgia Department of Transportation and the Atlanta Regional Commission to Henry County. We have been told that Atlanta Regional Commission, or ARC, is prepared to contribute $500,000 or 80% of the plan update cost. And Henry County would be expected to contribute a 20% local match, which is $125,000. Before this meeting, I reached out to ARC again and I have been assured that the federal funds are secure and are available. And I have also reached out to the cities of Stockbridge, McDonough, Hampton and Locust Grove, inviting them to join the transportation planning update process and contribute towards the local match based on their shares of Henry County's population. I have received inquiries from the cities of Stockbridge and Locust Grove regarding participation and what their share of the cost would be, and I've provided those information. But as of today's meeting, I have not received a commitment from them. But if and when they join the process, it will reduce Henry County's cost of the local match. So I again want to suggest that you can consider seriously that we updated the county's transportation plan in light of the county's growth. And I have, in your packet, there is a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Atlanta Regional Commission where ARC will contribute $500,000 or up to $500,000 or 80% of the plan update cost. And Henry County would agree to contribute a 20% local match of up to $125,000. Now, these dollar amounts could change based on the final agreement we enter into with a consultant. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baker. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, my only comment is that, again, I'm glad to hear that we've got to engage our citizens and also the cities. So because, again, this is part of what the joint comprehensive transportation plan would do and you're right, it needs to be updated as we continue to address all of our transportation options here in Henry County. So I'm glad to hear that. Okay, I see Ms. Matthews raising her hand.
Sherwood, Sherwood, this again is what I mentioned with our transit study. I want the board to be aware that we definitely want to proceed with entering into an MOU with the Atlanta Regional Commission. The funding for this will be allocated in the transportation planning department budget for FY '21, but we are definitely, will be revisiting it. Again, dependent on where we are from a revenue standpoint. Mr. Baker alluded to the cost may be less than that amount. So we will definitely have some conversations if it is determined that we've got to go back and revisit individual department budgets. This is definitely a priority and I don't want us to reduce the funding because we just don't have the funds available. But I wanted the board to be aware that one of the things that we've heard loud and clear is that transportation is definitely a priority for the county, which is why we're bringing this to the board at this time. I know with everything that's going on, it's all about timing and it's all about defining what is essential for the county. But we all agree that transportation is a priority and is definitely essential. Also want Commissioner Thomas to know that we have not ignored the fact that we will also have a transportation advisory committee that is still on the forefront of all of our conversations. And certainly before we proceed with hiring a consultant to come in, we will assemble that group to identify not only what our priorities are, but to make sure that we have some oversight, not only with the current transportation projects, but with our SLOSS projects as well. I do want to commend Mr. Baker because he has already scheduled meetings and has had his first meeting with the city managers to show a collaborative effort in terms of our transportation planning efforts. And so that's definitely part one of a long phase to getting to the finish line. But Commissioner Thomas did have a resolution that I believe we brought to the board for discussion several months ago regarding a transportation committee. And we will definitely circle back with you, Commissioner Thomas, to make sure that we capture what the true intent is in terms of making sure that we get that committee in place. I know that you, Sherwood, and Mr. Baker have already spoken, but I do want to get something official in writing so that we can make sure that all the board members are on board with us creating this, this committee.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Baker? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion. Okay, it's the Commissioner Barron raises his hand as a motion, Commissioner Thomas as a second. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, that is a unanimous vote to move forward with this resolution, so thank you much and thank you, Mr. Baker, as well. Okay, we'll now move into our next item, which is a county attorney item. And this is regarding the resolution to approve employment agreement between the county and the county manager. So we will now welcome Mr. Patrick Doczter.
As you are all aware, the county manager's contract expired earlier in the year and we entered into an extension a few months ago to extend her employment contract through today. I've provided to you a draft by email last week and included on the agenda today, contract for renewal of her, for renewal of her employment. And rather than go through it detail by detail, I would point out sort of the big picture. It is a three-year contract. It would continue her role as county manager. Her salary would be increased to $175,000. And the only other real substantive change was vacation and sick leave from four weeks to six weeks. There were two minor changes to the agreement that I would ask you to consider today from the one included in your agenda, and I'm going to show you those as soon as I'm able to share the screen. Able to do that today. You know, I apologize. I will tell you what those changes were under the duties of the county manager, which is section one. I added a paragraph or a sentence at the end that reads as follows. "The board shall from time to time establish long-term and short-term priorities, policies and plans upon which the employee shall act." That would appear on page one, section one. And the second change would appear on section 12 of the agreement, which is on page four. I removed four weeks vacation, replaced that with six weeks. Other than that, the contract is as presented in the agenda. I'm happy to address any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. So are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion. I see Commissioner Wilson as a motion and Commissioner Clemens as a second. Are there any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, that is a unanimous decision. Thank you much and thank you, county manager, for all that you do.
Thank you all.
Okay, we will now move into the next portion of our agenda, which is relating to public comments. And due to COVID-19 and of course, the social distancing guidelines, citizens were requested to submit any public comments via email by Monday, May 4th at 5:00 PM. And so those comments would be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners and the County Manager prior to the meeting. I'll now acknowledge the county clerk to acknowledge any public comments that were submitted.
Chair, we received no public comment request for today's meeting.
Okay, thank you. That does conclude our public comments section then. Okay, well, now moving to the next agenda item, which is the approval for the minutes for the March 3rd Board of Commissioners meeting, which was a regular meeting, for the March 10th called workshop meeting and then also for the March 24th special called Board of Commissioners meeting. Were there any changes or revisions from the board to those minutes? Okay, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve. I see a motion from Commissioner Barron.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Clemens, who stated. Any further comments or questions? All in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, Commissioner Holmes, I didn't see your hand. Oh, okay, all right, so all, so that was a unanimous approval of those minutes. We're now open the floor or a mic for any commissioner comments. I know I've got several I'd like to make, so are there any commissioners? I'll start with Commissioner Holmes.
Yeah, I just had one question and Sheri and Mr. Smith. I saw that you sent the email this morning regarding SLOSS collections, but I didn't have a chance to review it. So I was hoping that you can share collection, first month collections for 2020 or SLOSS 5 compared to the first month or April 2013, SLOSS 4. And then also compare the revenue that we collected in 2019, April 2019, to April 2020. Where we at?
Commissioner Holmes, I will pull the, I'm going to try to share it on my screen and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith. His staff actually pulled that information together and I think he actually went back through 2004 because I think we had a request to compare our collections for, since 2004. So we do have that information available, so give me one second. And David, if you have it readily available, that would be great.
Yeah, I'm just looking for 2013. I just want to make a comparison between the first month of SLOSS 4 collections and the first month of SLOSS 5.
Let me unmute David and then I'm going to pull up what I have. Give me one second, Commissioner. Let me unmute David, and then I'm going to pull up what I have. Give me one second, Commissioner. Okay, David, you should have a message to unmute your phone.
Okay. Have you pulled it up?
No, I'm pulling it up now. Give me one second. Okay, Commissioner Holmes, we do have, so from 2013, in April of 2013, our collections were 2,482,61. As of today, for April 2020 was 3,164,427. And again, that was, you asked me to give you 2013 compared to 2020, correct?
Correct, correct. revenues are up from SLOSS 4 and SLOSS 5, it's unbelievable considering the pandemic and everything we've gone through this month.
And keep in mind, Commissioner Holmes, that is COVID-19 hit mid-year March. And so the numbers that I'm providing you, while we've received it now, it's for the previous month. So that would give you, that's actually your March numbers for April, or your March numbers in April. And so I'll be able to report back to the board once we close out April, what you're, will receive in May, what your April numbers are. And I'm going to continue to provide that information to you all, not only electronically, but we'll start adding that to our updates to the board as well. But you are correct, the amount went up.
So lastly, can you compare last year this time, revenue collections versus this year?
Do you want overall collections?
Overall, for budget purposes.
David, do you have that?
I do. So again, it's going for the SLOSS collections, revenue collections. We are going to be about down 6%, but it's primarily because of the one-month lag that we are experiencing right now. But overall, in terms of our property tax and overall collections, we're still going to be up. We've exceeded that as presented at our mid-year, and that has continued to be so.
Okay, thank you so much.
So David, that 6% is about $211,000.
$211,000. It's not, it's not a huge difference, but it's a... So if you're comparing, we were averaging about $2 million or $2.5 million a month. And over the past few months, in this particular month, we were up to $3 million, and then $3,000,001 compared to $3,300,000 over last year. That's a $200,000 decrease of about 6%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, Commissioner Holmes?
No, I'm done. Thank you so much.
Okay, anyone else? Any other commissioner? Commissioner Wilson? Please unmute yourself, Commissioner Wilson, or someone, please unmute him.
Okay. Got a question for the county manager. We're looking at closing out SLOSS 4 in the next couple of weeks, next month. So I'd like to get staff to revisit the interchange because we have money still sitting there from SLOSS 4 and bring back some recommendations by next meeting, please.
Absolutely. And what we will do, we had already planned on bringing a resolution to the board for the May 19th meeting regarding some additional collections that we've received. And I think we've had some conversations with each of you all regarding projects that are almost at the finish line, that we have some funding that's available. So that will come back to the board on the 19th. What we will do, Commissioner, for the meeting on the 19th is we can definitely bring back and identify the funds that are still currently available with the interchange. We won't have enough time between now and the 19th to solicit proposals or get any additional information, but we can certainly provide to you all what the initial cost was and then give you all an opportunity to decide if you want us to pursue solicitation of new proposals or what the thoughts of the board, what the thoughts of the boards would be in terms of the interchange. But you are correct, those funds are still sitting there. And I think we briefly talked about it in some of our meetings with you all as we were discussing the budget.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Wilson, before we go to Commissioner Clemens?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
Yes, this is basically for Sam. Sam, you did a report to the board a couple of months ago, and you were looking at the safety issues of our roads. And you listed the top five accident areas in Henry County. And one of the things that I pointed out to you was that the top five accident areas in Henry County, four of the five were Interstate 75. And there was only one road on there that was a high accident impact area in the county, and it was Jonesboro Road West. And at the last meeting, we brought up, you know, can we get lights down that to work, you know, to reduce the impacts of the accidents in that corridor? The commissioners were not supportive in getting those lights on Jonesboro Road to try to address the impact of that area being a high accident area. So one of the things that they were talking about was that they had other areas in the county that also need lights. And I agree, this entire county needs lights on our roads. We have too many two-lane dark roads. But the reason that Jonesboro Road came up first was because it was the top, it was in the top five areas in this county of deaths, of accidents and deaths in the county. And the commissioners did not see that as a necessity to light it up. So I'm going to ask you to do some more research on that, bring it to the board again. Those commissioners who did not support it because they felt that they needed lights in their areas, I'm going to ask them again to submit that information to you so that you can see if those areas are high-impact areas for accidents and traffic issues, and so that we can move forward. That's one of the things that we got to address. We have to address these dark roads in our counties that are having a lot of accidents that are causing deaths and that are as high-impact as the interstate. And Jonesboro Road is that issue. And so commissioners, again, you know, this is not something that I came up with. The facts are there, the accident counts are there, the death counts are there. And that's why we've asked for lights on Jonesboro Road West. So I'm going to continue to bring it up. I don't know how many more people have to die. I don't know if I need to pull the records of people that have lost their loved ones on that road to bring to you guys' attention. But this is, this is an area that we need to address. And maybe we start with this one, and then we continue to look at what other areas. But I don't think that the commissioners should hold up those lights on Jonesboro Road just because you guys have, you know, other areas that need them. We need them all over the county, but we have to look at, you know, this particular area being the top, one of the top five areas of high-impact accidents. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments, Commissioner?
I just, I think Sam has something to say.
Oh, Sam, did you, I'm sorry, did you run to respect? I'm sorry. Oh, you're muted, sir, or we can't hear you for some reason. I'm not sure what's happening.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
I want to say that with Commissioner Clemens that, yes, we need lights in many areas on many roads of Henry County. But I also made one additional comment, and that is that a lot of the crashes are, we are not necessarily infrastructure-related, but human-related. Because when we look at the factors that cause the crashes, oftentimes it's because people are driving too close to the cars in front of them, are not obeying traffic laws. They are distracted with their cell phones. So those are also factors. But it is true that on the top five list, Jonesboro Road is number four, as I recall. But it's not just because of infrastructure deficiency, but also for human-related factors.
Okay, thank you. All right, any additional comments, Commissioner Clemens? Okay, are there any other comments from any of the other commissioners at this time? Okay, well, I'll be brief with the ones that I want to share. We've spoken a lot about COVID-19, and I do want to commend our county management team, the EMA Director, and all that you all are doing, working with the Department of Health, CDC, and also with the cities locally, and the, of course, the hospital to make sure that we are keeping that as a focus. But I did want to bring to everyone's attention that this is also National Nurses Week, May the 6th through the 12th. And I just encourage especially our citizens and all of us to continue to please thank our nurses and all of those that are in the healthcare field, but especially the nurses this week because they are on the front line battling COVID-19. So again, if you will just recognize nurses that you know or those that you are in contact with during this week. The other thing I'd like to note is that we continue to look for some good news in the midst of all of these challenges with COVID-19. But as you all remember, Henry County was supposed to be presenting a recognition for the Count of Excellence Award. And we, Henry County was one of the six counties in the state that was going to be recognized at the ACCG Conference that was actually canceled or postponed. But I do want to commend again, the Board of Commissioners and staff and everyone else, especially because this one was around public safety and the focus on public safety. So I do want to recognize that. But we do also now have another ACCG recognition. Mr. Jaden Williams, who is a junior at Dutch Town High School, actually was recognized and is being recognized by ACCG as the state's youth, for the State Youth Leadership Award. So we are very proud to have someone here from our own Henry County, again, recognized at that level for outstanding leadership and contributions to the community. So congratulations, Jaden Williams, and again, for representing Henry County across this state. And then the other thing, which I thought is good news, is if you've seen the latest census reports, Henry County has made the top 10 in the state of Georgia as of, I think, yesterday, meaning that we've had 60.8% of our reporting to be made, which is good. But we definitely want to continue to get that number high. We want a complete count. And so we thank all of Mr. Don Ash and Ms. Kayla for leading the Census Complete Count Committee along with Ms. Matthews and all of those who are on that committee. You're doing a good job even in the midst of COVID-19. I did receive a note that the self-response deadline has been extended to October the 31st due to COVID-19. So again, let's continue, commissioners. You all have been doing great jobs as well, getting the word out to encourage people to complete the census. So again, thank you all for that. Ms. Matthews, if you could, maybe at a future meeting, if you can also plan to give an update, especially as it focuses on our seniors and how, I know we've definitely have kept them in mind through COVID-19, but I think everyone needs to be aware again of what is been done, being done for our seniors here in Henry County to help them get through these tough times, especially as they are still extended through June the 12th for shelter in place and all those that have other issues. But again, just wanted to, again, if you could bring that to the board and to the citizens in the future. So that's all that I have for today. Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
Chair Wood?
Oh, yes, Commissioner Clemens, yes.
Today is also Teachers Appreciation Day, so I know our teachers have been actively making sure that our students stay up on their schoolwork. It's such a hard time for our students. So just kudos to those teachers in Henry County that are doing what they need to do to keep our students abreast. It's almost the end of the school year, but a lot of the teachers are taking the backlash from the students not having graduation, not having proms. So it's been a difficult time for our teachers. So just kudos and Happy Teacher Appreciation Day to those teachers out there.
Oh, yeah, very good. And thank you, Commissioner Clemens. That was a very good note to make. So we appreciate that. Okay, any other comments or thoughts from the board or staff? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. Our next item is regarding our upcoming meetings and events on May the 19th at 9:00. We will begin the public hearing for the FY 2021 budget. So again, that's on May the 19th at 9:00, and that's a called Board of Commissioners meeting. And then on May the 19th at 6:30 PM, this will be, which is our regular Board of Commissioners meeting at 6:30 PM, that will include a public hearing and adoption of the FY 2021 budget. So if there's nothing else for the good of the group, then we'll now accept the motion to adjourn. Yeah, I think I saw, okay, I heard Commissioner Clemens, I saw Commissioner Wilson and Holmes' hands go up at the same time. So we'll take those as second. Any further discussions? All right, thank you all. Consider all in favor to adjourn. Please signal by raising your hand. And again, we thank our citizens. So we're considered ourselves adjourned, but we do thank our citizens and all who've been patient through this COVID-19 as we continue to be safe. And we encourage everyone to please stay safe regardless of what rules are out there. Protect yourselves and your family. So thank you all. Have a good rest of the day.